Westernville City Council Work Session at 5:02 PM on August 21st. And I start by asking the councilors to review the agenda and items on consent. Any comments?
No.
Okay. Any councilor concerns?
No.
Okay. Well, I have a, I have a councilor concern.
If you have any questions about the bus, it's on consent. If you don't have any, I'm going to cut him loose and go with his life.
This, this is the trolley?
Yes.
I don't.
Okay.
Just anyone else? I mean, I'm just one person.
You do? Okay, well, now's the time because it's, so come on up Scott. Apparently we do have one question.
Just a couple of quick questions. Can you tell me, it talked about how the prior trolley was very popular. Can you give me some examples of where it's being, where it will be used?
It would always be used for things like, well, like the upcoming block party. It would always be out at that. We used to do trolley tours with it, take people around to historic locations in town, farmer's market, shuttles, things like that.
So is it available for like neighborhoods to be able to say, we want to all go to like, for instance, the farmer's market on Thursday and then?
They did have scheduled farmer's market runs with it, but we typically can't do special request type things because of the federal funding and the transit system. It has to be open to everybody.
That was my only question. Thank you.
I have a quick question. So it looked like at kind of the end of the report, there was a photo of bright green. Is that for sure what the color design will look like?
No, that's the color that they just happened to have in the brochure, which just happens to be Smart's color, but no, we don't, we hadn't planned on, on a bright color like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I love the idea of the trolley. That is electric. It's awesome.
Anything else? Okay.
All right. Thank you. We'll start with our?
I have just one councilor's concern.
Oh, wait. Oh, different, not for?
Different.
Thank you. Go ahead, sorry. Council of Lyndville, go ahead.
Good night Scott.
Night Scott. So I have had several citizens, as they often do with us councilors, talk to us about traffic. And the particular issue has to do with Town Center West, Wilsonville Road intersection, and then through the light under the overpass and getting to the two lanes that go on to I-5 South. And the concern that a number of citizens have expressed to me is that there, between Town Center West and the light, the, the traffic light going west, there is one lane of traffic that is designated for the southbound, the turn to the southbound, but underneath the overpass, it extends to two lanes, and then the two lanes go into the, the on-ramp. And because the traffic is often so bad at that intersection, that people make the right turn onto Wilsonville Road from Town Center West, fully well with the intention of cutting into the traffic line and getting into that, and it creates?
To head south on I-5.
To head south on I-5. And so the concerns were, we have less traffic that actually continues west on Wilsonville Road, and more traffic that actually continues on to go to I-5 South, because that's the lane that backs up, backs up to towns, up Wilsonville Road, uptown center. And is there a possibility that we could look at two of those lanes going west on Wilsonville Road being designated for the I-5 Southbound, which might relieve that congestion there? And it would, it would prevent people from cutting in and then creating more of a backup there? So I thought, I promised that I would pass those comments along, and actually, they were looking for some kind of a barrier, like a, you know, a?
Like a pork chop or something?
Yes, that would prevent people from cutting in, because it just back, it just stops them. You know, they stop, they wedge in the front, the front of their vehicle, and then people stop, and then it backs up, it backs up, backs up, backs up. So?
I don't think that's possible.
Well, I'm?
Certainly looking at the two?
I'm certainly, yeah. I, I, I'm certainly not a traffic expert, but I think that may actually be a solution to a lot of that backed up traffic that's going, that's going there.
I wrote it down, I'll bring it up with Zach.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll start with our first item on the pre-council work session with Ms. Valentine about our public art program guidelines.
My name's Erica Valentine. I'm the City Arts and Culture Program Coordinator for the city. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the public art program guidelines and policy. So that draft is what you have in your packet tonight. So a little bit of background, as far as how we got here today. The city adopted the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy in 2020. It was a 1920 council goal, and within the strategy, it provided findings and recommendations for cultivating a sustainable, long-term plan that supports community aspirations for a vibrant cultural scene in Wilsonville. So that development of that strategy was a multi-year process. It was the largest task force in city history that helped kind of implement that strategy. One recommendation that came from the strategy is that the city forms an Arts and Culture Commission and provides supporting staffing resource. So the city does have our Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission, or ACHC. They've been meeting since April of 2022, and that supporting staffing resource is my position, and I've been with the city since November of 2022. Another key finding that came from that strategy is that public art is recognized as a significant cultural asset in Wilsonville. And the relating recommendation for that finding was for the city to develop a long-term, sustainable public art program. The ACHC has recognized public art as one of their top priorities. I would say a majority of their meetings have touched on public art in some way, and I would say public art is one of the more, I'd say tangible recommendations and findings that came from the strategy. So it was kind of a, made sense for them to sort of start at that point. So why is there a need for a public art policy with guidelines? The city currently does have a public art collection. There are over 20 pieces in the city's collection that the city does own, but there's no policy or procedure kind of guiding that program, or explaining kind of what we as a city are doing with the public art. So establishing this policy is sort of step one in the framework of legitimizing that we have a program, and just establishing that we have a program. So within the policy, it highlights public process, and it also follows best practices and public art standards. So with that public process, that's obviously important with everything we do, but with art, for better, for worse, does tend to evoke a lot of emotion from residents. Someone will love a piece, and someone will hate a piece, and that doesn't always indicate success of it, but it's really important to be able to fall back on that policy that outlines all the different steps that we as a city took to get to that end result of putting a piece up. So involvement with the ACHC, different panel processes, interviewing, interviewing the artists, and all these steps that are kind of outlined in the policy. Those steps do, can vary from project to project depending on the location. So putting up like a mural under an overpass, you'll probably have a different process than putting up a sculpture, like right by the kids' area in the park. So there are some variances of the process, but I'd say the overarching, you want to be able to fall back on that process so there's no community perception that it was one of, a city elected official that chose the artist, or a city staff person that chose the artist. We want to be following that community approach. The policy outlines best practices and public art standards. So an example of that is the RFQ, or Request for Qualifications process. With art specifically, you want to make sure you're paying our artists a living wage and fairly. So you want to start with that Request for Qualifications before you move into the design phase, so you're not having, you know, 10, 20, 30 artists submit a very specific design for a specific project in Wilsonville, going in a specific park, for an example. So that's kind of best practice. I want to highlight the kind of most common process that we see in public art within cities is this kind of back and forth process between the artist and the client, the client being the city. And that kind of creates the best product at the end, because you're giving an artist the opportunity to really get to, you know, Wilsonville, the residents, the users within the space where the artwork is going. So you usually don't get to that final design at the end until later on in the process. You can, and it's not wrong, to purchase artwork that artists already have, and there's a section in the policy, but I'd say that's not necessarily typical in the public art field within cities, because then you're kind of left with pieces that don't really make sense to Wilsonville. So if you were putting, you know, a piece near the river, you'd probably want the artist to be designing that piece with knowledge of the history, how was the river used in the past, sort of so it relates, so you're not putting, I won't give it an example, but so you're not putting, you know, a sculpture of something that has never been in Wilsonville, or there's no, there's no tie. So the ACHC has mentioned that a lot of, quite a bit, just wanting to kind of support that cultural identity and that identity of Wilsonville, so that you're, you know, getting unique pieces that don't exist other places. Community engagement is really important in the public art process, so that will vary project to project. An example is that we will be doing a mural at the skate park in Memorial Park. That is possible from CEP funds. So we were at the Skate Jam event to start talking to the skaters, so they know about the project, see what they like and don't like. Since they're the group that will be engaging with that the most, we don't want to put a mural that none of the skaters like. So just kind of connecting with those people. If a piece is going right in front of, you know, a local business, even if it's on city property, you know, you want to bring these people on in the front, front part before you're to the installation. That always really helps. And then the ACHC is kind of named as the review body, so it would be the ACHC that consists of the majority of the panels. So that's really important, that it's all kind of funneling through this ACHC that was formed to kind of be the voice of arts and culture in, in Wilsonville. So the process to get to this policy development, we've reviewed other cities' public art guidelines and policies. They all vary from city to city, but generally speaking, they all really do contain the same kind of nuts and bolts, and the same kind of headings of what kind of makes a public art program. We've worked with other public art professionals that have reviewed the policy. So the city of Hillsborough Public Art Supervisor, Carl Leclair, he's been a great resource. He's looked at it. It's been distributed to the, the policy's been distributed to the exec team. The ACHC's reviewed it twice, at two separate meetings, so kind of a first draft and a second draft that you have today. And then our legal team did a thorough review to make sure that everything in the policy is in compliance with other city code, as well as Oregon contracting laws are mentioned in the policy. So this is just a high-level overview of kind of those headings within the policy. So future project goals, we define public art. The definition can vary, but typically, you know, it's something created by an artist, so you don't get in the weeds of, you know, is that sign public art, or, you know, trash can? It kind of defines what we're looking at. Funding, management, and roles, so differentiating the role of staff versus the ACHC. The ACHC bylaws are linked in the policy, just to be able to refer to those bylaws as far as what their kind of scope is. Panels, evaluation criteria, best practices, so such as an RFQ, approvals, and I'll touch on that in another slide as well. Purchasing art, receiving donations of art, artist agreements, maintenance of art, and de-acceptioning, which is removing a piece that's already been accepted and is in the city's collection. So just to highlight the approvals, and this is something I definitely would like council to weigh in on as far as their comfort level, and, you know, what they would like to see in the policy. So in the policy, it shows that panel, the panel may consist of the entire ACHC, a portion of the ACHC, and/or other relevant stakeholders or experts. So those other relevant stakeholders or experts can be people specific to that project. So if it's a project in a park, maybe someone on the parks maintenance team, or someone from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, or someone that is, has been in the public art field. The ACHC, a couple of them have public art background, but in general, you just want to make sure that your panel is the best panel to get the best end result. So choosing the most qualified artist that's going to be successful for whatever the goals, goals are of the project. So typically, I would believe that it will be the entire ACHC. As the ACHC moves into more specific work and are doing more things, it may be more efficient to have a section of the ACHC do certain parts of the panel, such as forming a public art subcommittee. So that will, they will be discussing that to kind of decide that. And I've seen different processes work where it's, you know, three members of the ACHC conducting the artist interviews versus the entire nine-member ACHC. So if it was a portion of the ACHC, they would then take that recommendation to the entire commission to make those recommendations. But it will vary project to project of what makes sense, so that's how it's kind of written in the policy. The panel would be the review body for selecting the artists, as well as their proposed design. So it is kind of that two-pronged approach, which is just the process for public art. So kind of step one would be the panel deciding on the artist based on those RFQs, and then you would, from those, from selecting that artist, then you would move into that design, design phase, where there's a back and forth, and approving the final design. That is what is most typical, I would say, with cities' public art programs. You can also have a panel select the top, you know, two or three artists, and then invite those two or three artists to create a design. You would pay all those top two or three artists an honorarium, and then you would choose the design based on that. So there are different processes, and it would be up to the ACHC to kind of talk through that of what they think is best for that. But I want to highlight that as the policy draft is written, the ACHC or the panel is that decider of the artists, as well as the design. So as it is, it, the artists and design isn't coming through to council every time that we are doing a public art process. That is most typical with cities' programs, to keep the art people, the art commission that has been appointed, to be those people deciding artists and designs. We would be following city code, which is if the cost of a project exceeds $100,000, then a council must approve the contract. So if it's over $100,000, I would be bringing some basic art, the artist information, letting you know, this is the artist that the ACHC has recommended, some background information on the artist, and probably their examples of their past work. So that would be before we get to the contract, so I wouldn't have the final design or the proposed actual artwork for the project at that point. It would just be the information on the artist. So that was a lot, but that, I would say of the policy, definitely need, needing feedback on this sort of approval process, and at what, does the council want to see each artwork? Or are, is the council comfortable with the ACHC being that recommender and that reviewer of the artists' applications, going through the artist interviews, as well as that proposed design process, which would be alongside staff in the Parks and Rec Department? So that's sort of all of that in a nutshell. These are some of the city's current public art, but I'm open to? These are some of the city's current public art, but I'm open to any questions or feedback. And then I'd be returning to, I would be bringing the policy back to the ACHC again at another meeting, and then coming back to council for approval.
Go ahead, Councilor Berry.
Thank you for your report. So the, you said there's about 20 art pieces around the city now. Do you have an idea of what the price rate, the value of those are, and what the median value is? I'm trying to calculate, how many times can we expect to see a $100,000-plus piece of artwork?
So we have the information on how much the pieces were purchased for, but they haven't been recently appraised in this current year. So a lot of, you know, some of the pieces have been installed for, you know, 15, 20 years, so we have that information. It's sort of, the, the price really just depends on the size of the piece and the scale. And that can kind of depend on, you know, where it's going. So if it's going, you know, near a busy intersection, you know, there, there's different scales of pieces that are more appropriate. You know, if something's going like near the splash pad, you're going to want to make sure it's not climbable for kids. So the pricing can really vary, and we're in such the early stages, it's, it's hard to say how, how often a piece will exceed that amount. But I would say, generally speaking, in that, like, $75,000 to $120,000 is going to get you a large, substantial piece that includes the additional time of, you know, going back and forth with different stakeholders and community meetings and engaging the community that way. Did I answer your question? We're kind of in this early stage where I don't know-
Are you asking the value of the 20 pieces, like a median value for the 20 pieces we have? Do we know that?
We have that information. I'd have to take the median. They really vary. So we have pieces that were, that an artist really just wanted to get rid of, that they sold for $5,000, and then we have, you know, like, the clock tower is, is much greater. So I can get that information.
Beauty in the Bridge, right?
Yeah, that was-
That was very expensive.
So I have a clarifying, just to, to ask you to repeat what you were asking us to do about this. Were you, can you just restate, if you'd like the council to comment on if they would like to be a part of the decision for something at that scale of price? Okay.
Yes, so how, how the policy is currently, currently written is that the city council would approve staff moving forward with the contract process if it's over $100,000. But nothing says that if it's over a certain amount, that, you know, staff would come back at a certain point with the actual design, which isn't to say that we can't, we definitely can't.
But we're not, we're not getting involved in final design approval. It's-
As it is written now, no.
It's, it's more like, is this a reasonable price? So it might be based on where it is. Like you say, it might be, if, if they were looking at something at this West Station, which in order to be noticeable, there's a reason for it to be a certain size.
Fiscally, you would have to approve anything over a certain number of dollars.
Anyway.
And that would include pictures and a description of what you would be approving.
At the later phase.
So I think the question is, do you want to be involved in the design and picking out the design at any level? I think that's kind of a threshold question for you. Or do you empower the Arts and Culture Commission and the jury process to, to make that decision and just make the final determination, notwithstanding the funding question, which you would have to approve?
I thought I, so is, so can you restate what you're looking for again?
Um, I'm trying to, to clarify. So I think it's, does the council want to be involved at any portion of approving design artwork? As it is written now, that's all through the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission. So I think that's part one. And then if the council does want to be involved with that design artwork process, to kind of flush through that process, because at the point that I have, you know, would have a design, bringing it to council, the council doesn't like that design, it's, it sort of starts quite a bit of that process back, back to the ACHC and back to the artists, and a bit more, you know, artist time to like redo the design and, and more expense, right?
It does, but yet by the same token, when you're talking about a threshold of $100,000, I, I, again, I think there, there's a fiduciary responsibility that the council carries that goes beyond the contract. So is it, you know, you, that's when you go into it, is it culturally appropriate? Will it stand the test of time? Is it a wise investment? Things like that. And that, but that actually takes me back to a question that I had, which may change how I feel about it. Is there a member of the Parks Department that, on this committee, or does this committee operate independently?
Well, she's the staff person for the ACH.
Are you with the Parks Department?
Yes, my position is housed within Parks and Rec.
Are you a voting member?
No.
No, she's staff support.
Okay. That's in, and of my concern, is that, I understand that you're staff support, but I become a little bit concerned that the ACHC begins to operate independently. I'm sorry. And the reason I bring this up is that we know that we find ourselves in a politically sensitive place. Every city does. And that one, what one person may consider art, another person may consider offensive. By having a member or more city visibility or oversight over it, I think it allows us to ask more questions, because we can, as a council, or as a member of city, of the Parks Department, sort of take that look back. Because having artists in my family, I know that their view of art is very different than my view of art. And I think what we have here already is beautiful. Some may say some of it is superfluous, though, and it's not a wise investment. And the challenge I have is that when it goes sideways, which it probably does a lot, that they don't come and pound on the door of the ACH, ACHC, they come to council.
I think that is part of the conversation, too. Is there a dollar amount, you know, if it exceeds a certain dollar amount, then to work into the process that staff would come back with, you know, the ACHC's recommendations of the design with council's final approval? That is an option, too. I, you know, just need to-
So does lowering the threshold-
Believe that, I guess, or falling that.
Well, go ahead.
It seems to me that we do, through our consent agenda, we do approvals for contracts that we don't review outside of what's in our packet. We don't weigh in on the advisability, or the contractor's qualifications, or the, they usually come to us. Because we have the fiduciary responsibility for contracts that exceed that amount, but we don't, because they often show up on the consent agenda, we don't do review, so to speak.
Yeah, well, and so that's a really good point.
So, so let me just finish for a second. So I think tying our, our concern about, and your concern about appropriateness, or whatever, to a dollar figure doesn't necessarily get at what I think you want to do. I mean, that's, that's a statute that, that we are forced to do. We don't, it, it could show up on our consent agenda as, as an ACH. You know, it's just approval of the dollar figure expenditure. It is not whether it's appropriate or not. So, so I, I, I'm sensitive to what you're saying in terms of the, the, the concern about the design. Some of the things may be small and still be problematic. And so I, I don't, I don't know that the dollar figure gets to what, what your concern is. So I think if there is concern about the council having some input into approval, or that we have some staff, or we have a liaison from the council, or we, whatever we have, that, that gets to something else. And then I have a different question.
That gets to my point, because you're right about the consent agenda, but those are coming through staff. Those are going through a process. ACHC is a committee of citizens, correct? And that is what I see as separate-
It's not unlike Metro Enhancement Committee. They make recommendations to council on grants that come to you for approval.
We do all of them. And we do, we review every single one of those projects.
Right.
They don't come on a consent agenda.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, in terms of analogous, yes, it's a committee making a recommendation to council.
Okay, so you have one more question?
Right, I do have a question.
Okay.
I have a question about the section on gifts, gifts of state, which is on page nine, 15 in our packet, and page nine of the document. And I'm thinking about, like, our sister city, or the Korean War, the veterans, the war memorial, some of those kinds of things, which, some might be artifacts, but some may be actually art pieces. And my concern is that the city would not have the ability under this statement to just receive a piece, much like this up in our conference room, or things that are in our case down here, because it says that the city staff must refer all such gifts of state to the ACHC for its recommendations. Why would we do that? Why wouldn't staff have the authority to accept a gift?
Well, I think we established this committee to have a process and to have policies in place for recognizing what is public art or isn't. So you've empowered these folks who have some interest in art and culture and, in the community, to make those recommendations and to make decisions. Because staff, specifically, I'm no expert on public art, so whether we should receive, like, you know, I'm just thinking of something that you, you might receive or be gifted to you that would have absolutely no relevance, that might just be some huge albatross that we, we don't want. So, I mean, I-
May I suggest, I want, we, we recently received a little cork figure from the Japanese exchange students.
Yeah.
Maybe we have something in here that's a de minimis value, doesn't need to qualify for that.
Well, I think that's not public art, though.
Okay, it's not public art.
That's a gift from Kirakawa.
Yeah, so none of us are going to get this.
Right.
So I wanted to say, a couple, I've been tangentially connected to the, to some of these committees before. And it is, it is the role of that committee to be focusing on this 100%. Well, we're focusing on other things. And in the world of art, yes, it is reflecting many different things, not just what these five people see as art. And that is how art would get to be actually in our community. So I think that, you know, we do, we do have a liaison to the committee, which I'm serving in that capacity in this first iteration, but it's, but it, but I don't have a voting rule. And I don't think we have councils, except for on Community Enhancement Committee. We have voting rules on that, and that's the rule of, that comes from Metro, right? That is-
Part of our bylaws that they approved.
Part of our bylaws.
That they approved, yes.
Because that's where that funding comes from. But I do think that, you know, we, the, the, the nature of this whole committee format, going back several years, was to involve people from the community to be involved in reflecting our culture and heritage through the bylaws and all these other things. So I guess what I'm thinking is, we're never going to get away from having some opposition to things, to whatever is chosen.
I, and I, I would add to, it may not be reflective in the policy, but, and although I'm, as staff, I'm not voting, but I do have a public art and public administration background, that I am confident we're not going to get down too far on the track, that it's, we're not going to put up a piece that is problematic. I think that's something to keep in mind, that there, there is a difference between, like, an issue and problematic, than like, people just maybe think it's ugly. The hope is that no one thinks it's ugly, but I think there's a part in that process of, even as a non-voting member, I would say the ACHC is, is pretty receptive to how I've kind of educated them about public art and educated them about, you know, the processes within public art that, and I know the commission would be changing frequently, but I, I don't, I think in that worst-case scenario, I don't think it would, we would be getting to that, that point of, of choosing an artist that is going to be paid for something that is, you know, going to offend anyone. I, I don't foresee that process happening, and I, when I have seen that in public art, it's typically public art programs that aren't housed within a city, and with, you know, they're kind of a private, separate thing, where they're not adhering to an actual policy and public process, and kind of all those rounds to get to that end point.
I mean, I think the bottom line is, it's, public art for a small community is going to be about celebrating our local history, heritage, and, and things that are kind of relevant to Wilsonville. We're not going to be building things that are going to inflame tensions or-
Well, that brings up a couple of other questions of mine, too, because, and thank you for providing your qualifications. Is there a, although I didn't see it written in the policy, but is, with, with the commission, is there a desire to select local artists, or give them a preference, where you give them, like, a certain amount of preference points, because they are local, and they're more, there's more of a tie to the community?
The commission has expressed, expressed interest in that, but according to the Oregon contracting laws, you can't, Amanda can explain it if I explain it poorly, but there's stipulations where you can't put in requirements of geographical location.
Correct. You can't, we can't give any prioritization to, or award points for local, any local vendor. We, Oregon has a reciprocal prioritization. We're basically between an in-state vendor and an out-of-state vendor. Whatever that state provides as far as, you know, awarding points for, for being an in-state vendor, we can do the same, but most states don't do that. So we can't do it like Wilsonville versus outside of Wilsonville or county outside. So what we did do in recognition of what the ACHC was kind of getting at, is on page seven of the policy, page 13 of the packet, under the evaluation criteria, what we put was, one of the criteria was connection between the proposed project and the city's community or region. So rather than focusing on the artist, focus on the project and the project's connection to the local community. And that kind of, in a roundabout way, sort of gets at, at the same goal.
That makes sense. And I do have a couple of more questions, and my next question is on page 17 of the packet, page 11 of the policy. And that's regarding the, when you've got something on lease, or if we have art on lease or on loan, what liabilities does the city assume if the artwork is damaged or stolen?
Yeah, it would be outlined in the, in the lease agreement, but generally speaking, we would probably be on the hook for, for damage. If we knew who committed the damage, then we would be seeking, you know, recovery from them, but in all likelihood, if we're leasing it, we're going to be responsible for damage.
And then I have one last question, and that would be, let's see, on page 13, page 19 of the packet, on the de-accesion, on the price, where it's offered to the family or the heirs, my question- My question is, would we want to consider asking them to re, my notes aren't coming up, repurchase at the price lesser equal to the price paid by the city at the time of purchase? And that maybe they would have like 120 days to repurchase it? So this is on, on deaccession.
On C?
Yeah.
And on D?
The artist or his or her successors must elect to exercise their right to purchase or claim an artwork under this section. What is the reasonable period of time, is it 120 days?
We could, yeah, we could easily put in a timeframe. I would say probably somewhere in, yeah, in like the four to six month timeframe.
So if the artwork, this piece of public art, you know, Joe Artist suddenly becomes very famous and he did an early work here, and then he, he dies, but we decide deaccession because we're going to build something else there and we can't do anything else with it, we give the family first right to repurchase, correct?
Correct. And we could also, you know, opt to move, you know, relocate the piece.
Do we opt, and so what it says is it's at appraised value. It's not at what the purchase price was, correct?
Correct, is how it's written.
Okay. All right, thanks.
May I just ask one more question? And I apologize if, if it's in here and my quick read missed it. I'm not thinking so much about large pieces of art, but if we have supposedly like a gallery at some point where we have rotations of pieces and pieces get left, we can't return them to, we can't find the owner or what, is there a process for us to destroy them or get rid of them? Is it defined in here? And I just can't see it.
It's, it's not defined in here, but I, it, well, we are going to be putting a gallery in City Hall, but it's, you know, short-term exhibit, so I don't foresee that scenario happening with that program, just because the artist comes in and puts their work up. So there's not anything that says specifically in here, but I would think, you know, we would have an artist's agreement or contract that gives them, you know, an agreed-upon date to remove their artwork and de-install. And if it's not, you know, picked up by a certain amount of time, then I'd say the city has the discretion to either have it be part of the, you know, city collection or to, to get rid of it.
As long as it's handed in the contract, that's, I think, fine. We've had that happen, a bit of gallery on campus, and we had a lot of student art. And so the students would disappear and leave their artwork there, and we had no way to find them and no way to get it back to them, and so, and we didn't want to keep stacking it up, you know, forever and ever and ever, so.
The library has the same problem.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I wonder, on page 3, up at the top, where, just a minor point, where you list performance art on the last bullet at the top section, maybe just include theater in that list?
Yeah, definitely.
So we're not voting at this meeting. Oh, Council President Ockerville.
Thank you. I do have a question, let's see, under the in-kind donation section, this is page 15 of our packet, 9 of the, the item, 9, page 9 on the item. That last, or second to last paragraph under the in-kind donation section, there's a little bit that says, "ACHC must consider a proposed purchase of artwork using the acceptance criteria outlined in section 7D." But they're talking about proposed purchase, but this is in the in-kind. I just wondered if it should be, like, talking about acquiring instead of purchase, since it's in this in-kind, just a little massage of the term there, I don't know.
That's just a typo, because it is in that donation section.
Okay, yeah. But then, you know, that did lead me to go to section 70 and spend a little time with section, or section 70, which is the acceptance criteria applicable to all public art program artworks. And one of my initial concerns, so this is just, just a bit down below, it's page 16 of our packet, kind of at the top, there's a bunch of bullets there. One of my kind of concerns when I was reading through this is ongoing maintenance cost for, for some art pieces. And I guess maybe in connection with some of what Councilor Dunwell was talking with, about, you know, as far as there's a panel or ACHC, or ACHC, yeah, is, is making determination around what types of art pieces might be accepted. Could we run into a scenario where an art piece that has possibly a very high maintenance cost would be accepted? And, you know, what kind of position would that put us in? There are some very, very cool, engaging art pieces that I can imagine would be quite expensive to have over time, right? But, but it could be very interesting. You just want that, that cost to be in consideration from, from the get-go. However, when I was reading through these bullets, I see that, one of the bullets is, there must be budget allocation available for not only the acquisition and the associated costs, but they also, they list out installation of a plaque or signage and maintenance. So I see that being covered in this criteria that we have. And, and the final bullet says, "The city must be able to adequately and safely display and maintain and reasonably secure the artwork." So I wonder if that actually helps some of the earlier concerns that were mentioned, you know, by, by council members, too. If there was something that was very provocative, or, I don't know that it would necessarily fit that final criteria, right? So I really appreciate how this, what's being presented here. I feel like there are some checks and balances already in place with what we're looking at. And I, I really do appreciate that because, you know, we, we want the decisions that are being made to, to be beneficial to everyone. And if council is not necessarily in that role or in the loop, if it's under $100,000, you know, I'm glad to see those checks and balances in place in, in what we've got here. So I'm feeling good about it.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
Great point.
Let me, let me wrap around to what I said earlier, because I want to be clear. I'm not saying that I think council should be making the decisions on what goes in for public artwork. That's not the role of council, from my perspective. I just want to make sure that we're being thoughtful, and I agree, those checks and balances do cover a, a large portion of that.
And in fact, when I, we were just in Washington DC, and we, we went into, I think the Senate Visitors Chamber, it's a huge building, huge atrium, with this big wrought iron or steel sculpture that had images of clouds, and it was, it was a kinetic sculpture. At some point, probably public safety decided, sorry, but we have to take part of that down because it was dangerous. And so the original concept with whatever earthquake and seismic things got overridden by safety. And so that, I think this helps us, too, because you might have something that you later find, for whatever reason, it's, it can't be secured or something. Well, one more.
Sorry, one final question. I'll try to be quick, because I know we've already spent a lot of time talking on this. At, on our, in our packet, page 11, this is the top of page 5 of the item. The final sentence of that, that paragraph, this is under a section that's talking about restriction on direct financial benefit for ACH members and affiliates. It's talking about the restriction that like, nobody that's, nobody that's involved in the selection could, could directly benefit themselves, right? Which, which very much makes sense to me. However, would this potentially be applied, like, if there was a situation where ACHC was able to set up some sort of reoccurring grant program? And then in the future, that might make so that none of those people could ever apply for a grant, or, you know, that would be part of the program? And would that be a concern?
Well, we, we actually do have a grant program with the ACHC, and if, if, if one of the members is involved with a project, they can just recuse themselves from the voting process. Doesn't necessarily mean they can't, can't apply.
Okay, good, because I wouldn't, because we, I'm thinking this is the population.
Years later, when the commission...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Like, we wouldn't want to, you know, take, wipe out all of the potential artists because they've been involved.
Those rules only apply for, for voting members of the committee. If somebody matriculates off, they're no longer part of the process.
So then they could apply for...
Totally apply.
Something. Okay, so it's like if they have that active seat or something.
We do have artists that sit on the ACHC that are also making art, so.
Okay, it does, the language does say, "and indefinitely for projects that were developed or acted upon during their tenure on the ACHC." So I wondered if that was a little heavy handed.
I was going to say, I think there's a distinction between projects and programs. So if the skate park has a mural put up, and later on, another mural is going to be put up, I would say probably a former ACHC member could not apply to do a new mural there, because that's a, that's a distinct project. But a program that provides grant money to do public art, a former ACHC member could apply for that grant money.
Okay.
And the reason for that really is, is because the...
That example you gave seems a little extreme, though.
Well, the idea is, is that, are, did you get some sort of information...
Oh.
...because of your role at that time for that project, that then gives you an advantage when you're applying for that project to be redone? Maybe, maybe not, but, you know.
I see, okay.
Okay.
Well, the commission has spent a lot of time discussing this, and I appreciate that Erica and Chris and the consultants, they've, they've gathered all kinds of information, lots of discussion. And, and we've given some further thoughts. Is that enough for today?
I, I think so. I'm hearing that the council is okay with that coming, staff coming to the council with the contract information if it's going to exceed that $100,000 at that, that point prior to the contract development.
And anything under that, you're empowering the ACHC to make those decisions, decisions with staff support and consultation.
That does bring me to a quick question. This is on page 14 of the packet, page 8 of the draft policy. So it says, "The city staff, staff must compile a packet that includes the following materials." So city staff, you would, you would go into, is that talking about you? Are you city staff when it comes to that compilation, or is it someone else within staff?
It's, it's me.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Everybody got what they need covered?
Yes.
For that good discussion, and for all of the work of our volunteers on the commission. And that brings us to public parking lot regulations. We're going to really kick it up a notch. Going from art to parking.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Amanda Geil Hinman, City Attorney. Tonight, I'm here to talk about potential consideration of new parking lot regulations for city-owned parking lots. So by way of agenda, I'm going to do some background, particularly focusing on some state mandates that are informing this policy question that's coming to council, both on parking exemptions and the city's response to House Bill 3115, which is the Camping for Survival on Public Property Regulations that the state passed in 2021. And then we're going to talk a little bit about policy questions for the council. The first one being, of course, do we, should the council consider new parking regulations? And then if so, what should those regulations look like so staff can bring a proposal back to council? So by way of background, the state of Oregon adopted new Oregon administrative rules called, that's referred to as the Oregon Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFEC, policy. And I've included in the council packet an attachment that is the, what the planning department has put in as a, has created as a little cheat sheet for developers to figure out if they fall under the CFEC policy or not. But basically what it does is it sets that local governments cannot impose minimum parking requirements on new development in either exempt areas or for exempt development types. And if council looks at that attachment, you will see that the vast majority of Wilsonville, outside of Charbonneau and a, and a part of the area to the northwest, are, fall under those exempt areas. So for most of Wilsonville, we cannot enforce a minimum parking requirement anymore for new development. And so what, what staff are discussing is that there is this potential future impact on city-owned parking lots, especially next to adjacent residential areas or multi, or mixed-use areas, where there, it may start being used as overflow parking because of these regulations. Right now, we don't have a clear regulation in our code about time limits or anything like that for parking in city-owned parking lots. So it's, it's a bit of a blind spot for us, given these new regulations that are, that are going to be coming into play. Similarly, as council is well aware, in response to House Bill 3115, the city has designated vehicle camping in the western portion of our City Hall parking lot. That is time limited to 9:00 PM, from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. But a question has arisen of, when is somebody camping versus somebody parking there? And, or, you know, in another part of the City Hall parking lot? And can we enforce if somebody is there beyond 7:00 AM if they are parking versus camping? And so, and that's also then led to a discussion of, what if somebody's camping in City Hall parking lot, but then they go to the library? How long can they park in the library for? So we've kind of been going back and forth internally. As council's aware, we hold, every two weeks, we hold a camping implementation meeting to kind of go over issues. This is one that has definitely been flagged as, it's not been a consistent issue, but it's one that's popped up from time to time. And thankfully, we've been able to work with the community members who are kind of riding that line and, and work through those issues. But, you know, we want to be strategic and intentional about making sure that we have regulations that address the concerns that we're seeing. So the first question is whether council should be considering adopting a parking regulation. And like I've outlined, it would really be to potentially address overflow parking situations in our city-owned parking lots, and as this additional tool for helping us regulate camping and parking in, particularly in the City Hall parking lot. So we'll come back to that question, because I really want to get to the options if council's thinking about discussing this. So I really see it as three different options, in the way that when we've looked at other cities, you, I've seen them done different ways. Staff have a recommendation, but I want to lay it all out for council. The first would be putting explicit time limits in city code. What that means is, we would call out each city-owned parking lot and say, these are the time limits that are applicable. We wouldn't recommend doing a one-size-fits-all for all parking lots, because, for example, the library has different hours than City Hall does for public access. So you could explicitly put out time limits in city code. It would be very clear on what the regulations are, so from an enforcement and, you know, community perception or information, that would be easy. But the difficulty is, one, we will likely have more city parking lots over time, which means that you're doing a code amendment. And two, if we need to make any changes, that means you're doing an ordinance to amend that city code. So it, it doesn't have the flexibility and nimbleness that we've, that we've generally implemented with some of our other regulations, particularly around camping. The second option would be a city code... The second option would be a city code that states that time limits will be set by resolution. Now, the distinction here between two and three is that what it means is that council is going to be the one ultimately that is approving what the time limits are for each city parking lot, because it would have to be by resolution, which has to come to the council. So it council would retain authority in establishing what those time limits are. It does take away it does allow for some more flexibility because resolutions can be brought to council much more quickly. It's one consideration at one council meeting. So it is easier to implement from that perspective. But council meets every two weeks, and so it there is still a little bit of that lag time if we're seeing an issue. So the final option is designated authority to the city manager or their designee. This is what Tuolton has generally implemented for their regulations. First is that it has a flexibility in the approach. So the city manager, as we're seeing issues, can adjust the administrative their administrative policy in in response. It also, again, allows us to distinguish between the different city-owned parking lots and adjust particularly when you look at city hall that has a unique need because of camping. We can be a little bit more flexible with with the situation or if there's anything that kind of comes up over time. So like an example, one of the things we've talked about with city hall versus, let's say, the library is the library might have a specific hour timeframe tied to it's open for business hours. City hall, because we have this 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, we might say it's a 12-hour time period versus doing a specific timeframe. So that's an example of where we, you know, you could make some distinctions. Again, there's nimbleness in this, but the downside is that it'll be it'll be very important for the city staff to be communicating any potential changes with the community. So one of the things that Tuolton did is before a city manager, before there was the allowance for some temporary or emergency circumstances changes, but generally speaking, if a change in the administrative policy was going to occur, there had to be a published notice, both on the website and in a conspicuous place in the library. And then council also had the authority to call up any administrative change if they felt like there was a reason to look at it. So that's what Tuolton did. So it had this public notice period before the change went into effect. So those are the three main ways that we've seen that cities have implemented a parking lot, a city-owned parking lot regulation. This is, you know, a pretty quick overview, and so I'm happy to answer any specific questions the council may have. But I think what I'd like to do is first start now with the question of, does the council even want to look at a parking lot, a city-owned parking lot regulation to be implemented in our? Either way, we're going to have to do a code amendment. It's just at what level then is the ultimate authority on establishing the times?
My answer would be no. If we had if we were a large city and we had multiple, multiple, multiple parking law area, I mean, if we were really a big city, then I would say maybe we would like to be more concerned about this at a higher level. But I like your option three, much like Tuolton has done with the with the ability of the council to call up those decisions if there's a change to be made. I have faith that our city manager can make those decisions about what the parking times are.
First of all, I chuckled when I spread about the potential concern is we didn't think about that one, right? I mean, oh, well, I'm camping. Oh, now I'm parking. And I know there was a 500-foot, is it a 500 feet you can move? Is it potentially there's, you know, you could move your car 500 feet and then you're out, you know, then you're beyond the camping versus parking and now you're just, you know, so you move your car every once in a while? Didn't see that one coming, but yeah. I completely agree with Councilor Linville, the option three. I trust our city manager and staff to make those decisions.
Yes, I think using the administrative option is a is a good way to go. We later find we want to take it further, that might come after some time.
Or a series of really bad decisions.
Or a really bad city manager.
All possible.
Whole different meeting.
I think the nimbleness of being of not having have to go to council is really, I think that's the more responsive I think we can be to the community, I think the better. So not whether it's whether it's option one or two, it still would have to go to council. And we'd still be in that issue of a minimum of two weeks to so.
Well, I appreciate that you're like you're doing the foresight that this could be a problem. That could be a problem that's expanding as the parking regulations change and we start seeing that implementation. I hate seeing signs with rules all over. And if we can avoid that, I think that would be a good thing. If we can do it administratively, it's great, but if we need to change.
Yeah. If we're going to tow, we're going to have to.
We will have a sign.
Yeah.
So thank you.
With that feedback, I'm just curious. I was going to ask another question, but before, are you planning to what's your next part of this presentation? You might already be going there.
No, no, that's really the presentation. I mean, so the plan really is because we've seen a couple incidents come up and, you know, we want to be proactive, is we've got some language drafted and do intend if council, if it is council's recommendation to keep to keep moving forward with it, that we will bring an ordinance to adopt this policy as we're discussing this option three at your next at your next two council meetings. So it'd basically be in effect by, let's see, by October.
Good.
Did you have another question?
That covered it.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So that brings us to Mr. Cosgrove talking about opioid settlement fund.
I can be quick on this. I just want to let you know that we did receive our first check that also had some back payments of $55,000 for our portion based on population. We are still waiting to hear from Clackamas County on an agreement that we could bring to you if you want to join in with other cities to pool money with Clackamas County. The details of that, we don't know yet because we haven't seen, but it would be how can we pool our money, but make sure that we're getting what we need out of that from the county specifically for Wilsonville? That is just one option to consider. If we don't like that option, then at some point, we're going to have to sit down, you're going to have to sit down as a council and say, okay, we're going to get X number of dollars over X number of years. What's the best we could way we could use? Is it doing something with the schools? Is it doing something with our police department? The options are limitless, and Councilor Linville is on opioid committee. Maybe she'll come up with some great ideas. So what I want you to know is that we've got the first check. We have lots of time to discuss about what we want to do with that money.
Can that be spent in any way?
Well, can I just? My understanding is that we have five years to to and I don't know what they've have they have they give have they say it said it's this year, this year, this year, and this year, and you only have until this long to spend it.
You know, there is some timelines. I'm not I'm not sure exactly when that timeframe is, though.
We should have gotten because I think our allocation was somewhere around like $11,000 or something.
Seventeen grand, and I think it was two years in arrears. So I think this was like for the third year, so.
So there are some guidelines about how it can be spent. There is also a guideline that says that if it is commingled with another organization, there is no obligation that they give us any portion of that money.
Well, that's why you would have to have a really strong IGA to say if we give you our money, we want some accountability built into that agreement.
Right, right. But there are some there are a number of options, I think, that are local with because the money's not a lot and it's not guaranteed that you would get it in a lump like this. So it might be, I mean, it it literally could be spent on, you know, our police department, our behavioral health person, our a project that we have with the schools. There are some really good curriculum pieces that, you know, where we could just give grants out to the schools and they could do. So I'm I'm just cautious about us trying to go in with Clackamas County and and have expectations that we're going to get something concrete that's more than what we have.
I think that's fair. We won't know till we see the agreement, but at any point, council will have to make that decision. So you'll have to figure out what's best for Wilsonville.
I have some strong opinions on that. I think surrendering the funds to Clackamas County to use in as they feel is fit could be a great decision, but I think that if I were to look at it from a cost benefit analysis, the risk is too great, given what we've seen, particularly in Multnomah County and to a certain degree in Clackamas County where some of the, you know, where where public funds have been used for harm reduction, which can mean passing out needles, passing out Narcan, somewhat, as I believe, enabling addiction rather than doing things like, for instance, we know that we have a behavioral health specialist with the police department providing those individuals with resources or potentially funding a, you know, a support position for them or doing something where we can see a direct impact for those who actually are most in need in our city and being able to redirect those funds more on a local basis. It's really easy to give out, do a needle exchange program. But from my own perspective, I think that that is a grave mistake, and I think that that's proven itself. And I think Narcan, if it's given out by the police or if it's given out by public service, then that can be the case. But it's too easy to give those things away and enable, and particularly because we know now with Xylazine that Narcan doesn't even touch it. So I really want us to be thoughtful about how it's spent. I do believe that there are individuals within our city, particularly in public safety, that could give us some really good feedback on how to best best use those funds.
Yeah, and I think there we also could engage the school district because I think they.
Agree completely.
If they have a little bit of money, they they might, you know, they might have some really good ideas about how to use it and what might be appropriate.
For instance, with the school district, not only could they have an education program that could be partially funded, but if they have a need for Narcan under a controlled environment, I could see it there, but where it's not just providing it, you know, here we have Narcan.
There's a lot of free Narcan.
Yeah.
In the state.
I also like the idea of, I mean, having a locally visible and managed resource is beneficial also to the community at large. It has some benefit there because so much of what we see out there is many steps removed. And we and it's hard to see it being implemented like at your neighborhood school or with your police department.
And council, yeah, I agree. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to clip you. Councilor Linville, I think you are spot on with the schools, by the way. I do believe that capturing addiction early is the possibilities of being able to change lives through whether it's through education or, you know, even supporting like speakers that came into the high school or whatever it may be to use some of those funds wisely.
The other, the only other thing that I'll say is that there is a lot of, once the settlement board decides on how the money is going to be spent, there we may need to figure out where the gaps are in our own community. People are not going to go to Clackamas County for treatment. So having, if there's a gap here in what we need, then I I think we, I think we need to, we could we could lay the foundation for how we might be able to use those funds that would come to us later.
That's a good discussion. We'll have plenty of time to make a decision.
Stay tuned for the next step.
Yes.
And we, the next step is when we get this agreement?
Well, you'll have something to look at.
To review.
And to noodle over. And if it looks like it might make some sense for Wilsonville, we can pursue it. If it doesn't and you want a local option, then that's when you'll have to put your head around what options would you like to pursue? And it doesn't have to just be one, it can be many.
And one more question. Do we do we need to wait for this agreement?
You can decide right now that you don't want to pursue anything with Clackamas County. You can give us that direction and we can start designing a local program. And that is certainly the options are really what.
That's good to know because it may take a long time to get this agreement.
They made it sound like it was imminent, but that was literally four months ago. So I don't know what the definition of imminent was, so.
I think we should talk again in two weeks. How about that?
We will reach out to them and say that we had a discussion with our council and our definition of imminent was like yesterday.
Because this is a clear and present danger. It's not six months from now.
Exactly.
And if it would be helpful for council, the settlement agreements do have a specific list, I mean, it's a pretty extensive list, but it is a list of things that the money can be spent on, so we can share that with the council.
Yeah, if you decide on a local one, then we'll have that at our conference.
And is there anything, could you share that now so people will be thinking about it? Okay, let's send it out to the council.
Do that.
Great, thank you. With that, we will adjourn our work session and reconvene at 7:00 PM.
With that, we will adjourn our work session and reconvene at 7:00 PM.
And we'll start with a roll call.
Councillor Berry.
Present.
Councillor Linville.
Here.
Councillor President O'Carroll.
Here.
Councillor Dunwell.
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here. Please join me in a stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councillors, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to ask for an amendment to the order. One of our residents who wants to speak under public comment would. It would be convenient if we could move the public comment up. And I would like your -- to ask for an amendment to have public comment in front of mayor's business.
I'm -- I'm moved to approve the agenda as you have just described.
Is there a second? There. Okay. The motion's been moved and seconded to amend the order of agenda to put public comments as the next agenda item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That will bring us to public comment. And I have a card for Barbara Lucas. And Barbara, yeah, you can use the podium or sit down.
We were just discussing a little psych on. We're both from Orange County originally.
And you might move that microphone down. Yeah.
Second was little idea. Hi, I'm Barbara Lucas. And I've been in Canyon -- I've been in Wilsonville for 15 years. I specifically live on Canyon Creek Road. At this time, I don't want to give my address.
We have it on record. That's fine.
Okay. Now, the reason I'm here is because we -- the basic thing is the power lines that are running through next to apartments and homes there on Canyon Creek Apartment. Now, the thing is, is you've heard in the news what's happened to Maui. And then you see fires all across Canada. Bunch of cheerful things to make our summer, right? It's been very hot and dry, and it's just starting. I was a Cal Poly grad. I was a city planner. I was an RN case manager there. So. I was an RN case manager there. So I know whereof I speak. I am here to recommend that we consider a coalition amongst the cities that are along these power lines to have them placed underground so that we reduce the cost possibly. Now, the reason is because Wilsonville is known as Tree City. We have trees from all over the world, excellent fuel. We have, golly, just so many assets here. It's a really, we have farms, we have vineyards that moved up from California because of the drought and the fires there. That's one of the reasons motivated me to move here. Now, I can tell my daughter that lives in Southern California, she's having our climate, and we're having hers. She's in Ventura County. The reason I'm here is, again, the power lines that I suggest, we might have to think about putting them underground, considering the start if they, if it is entirely true. There's pros and cons on both sides about climate change. But regardless of that, there is overpopulation all over the world. And the more people you have, the more people need resources of all kinds. The other thing is, we have seen things that have gone on in Maui, and we've seen fires all across Canada. We've had heat waves before, but I believe there's been a certain amount of sabotage, maybe people want to call it arson, that has happened in these places. There's people that have threatened us with atomic wars. They're saying, we're going to get you one way or the other. One of the best ways would be to focus your attention on destroying another country's assets. And assets could be forests, vineyards, farms, you name it.
Well, thank you, Barbara. I just have to say, we've reached our three minutes.
Oh, I couldn't believe I've gotten that. But, okay, I think I've covered everything.
I understand what you're saying. And if you have, we've heard, if you have a written piece that you'd like to leave?
No, I don't have anything.
But thank you very much for your, for your comments.
Tiger has already put their utility lines underground.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate that. And have a, have a good, great evening. And we will, I don't know all the particulars on that kind of thing, but that's something we will discuss later.
Well, I'm pushing 80, so I've forgotten a lot of things that I used to know, too.
Well, thank you, Barbara. So I do want to read a piece about this section that I didn't read earlier, and I want to ask if we have any other people waiting for public comment. Okay, so that, that was an opportunity for citizens to make comments about items that are not on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. And staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to the questions raised during the citizen input tonight, or as soon as possible thereafter. So, thank you very much. And that now brings me to the mayor's business.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first item I wanted to share with the other counselors, and you'll be getting more information on this as you have already previously on the same subject, is about our, the task force to study the WES, which is the West Side Express commuter train extension to Salem. And we've got some new breaking news about this proposal, which is to study extending the WES commuter train, which starts in Beaverton. Now, it only goes as far as Wilsonville, but is to study taking it all the way to Salem-Kaiser with stops in Donald and Woodburn. And as you may recall, that our state legislators, Representative Courtney Neron, who's here, and Senator Aaron Woods co-sponsored a bill in this year's Oregon Legislative Session to study this. And with, it was House Bill 2662 is what it was called. It had a very good start, bipartisan sponsorship, and it received a unanimous approval by the Joint Transportation Committee. We really appreciate all that went into getting it that far. But like hundreds of other bills, it died before the session was over, and it was not able to get to the full consideration as what happened, the same thing that happened with hundreds of other bills this session. So now, the offices of Representative Neron and Representative Kenneth, Kevin Mannix of Kaiser are working to advance the study of extending WES service that would have the effect, you know, the concept is, could we study the concept of high-capacity transit linking the Portland metro area with the Salem-Kaiser metro region? And we've learned that the Mid-Wilamette Valley Council of Governments, which is a voluntary association of over 40 local governments, that includes Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties, 32 cities, and seven special districts, and the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron, are planning to launch in September the Wilamette Valley Commuter Rail WES Extension Work Group. And the participants to be invited in the group comprise all the supporters of House Bill 2662, the North Wilamette Valley Cities of Aurora, Donald, Hubbard, Kaiser, Salem, Wilsonville, and Woodburn. The Portland and Western Railroad, which is the operator of the WES commuter train, if you've ridden it, they do a fantastic job running that train. They do it on behalf of Trimate per a contractual agreement. The Salem-Mass Transit District, which is called Chariots, and Wilsonville's SMART South Metro Area Regional Transit, and Trimate, Woodburn Transit, and Yamhill County Transit are part of that operation, this, this interest in the study. And area state legislators and representatives of members of the Oregon Congressional Delegation as well. So the issues that are considered to be studied is, are the potential of a WES extension that would include land use, railroad improvements, operations, train stations, and last-mile connections to businesses and residences. And as, you know, as the traffic congestion that we talked about earlier today, and we hear about all the time of the South Metro Portland Area, North Valley, I-5 corridors continues to worsen. As our population grows, commuters can potentially, if we can get this project to go, can welcome a public transit alternative that is unaffected by the ever-increasing highway traffic congestion. And additionally, as ODOT is undertaking the I-205 toll project and the Regional Mobility Pricing Project for tolling all lanes of I-5 and 205 in the Portland metro region, issues of impacts to groups like low-income populations impacted by the tolls will surface. I recently had a couple of chances to speak with Mayor Frank Lonergan of Woodburn. I met him at the Oregon Mayors Conference, and I actually saw him this last weekend at the Fiesta that they held in Woodburn that had, I think, 30,000 visitors. And he has agreed to chair the work group. So as city council members, I would, I would like to think of one, if one or two of us on the commission, on the council, might like to consider serving as representatives or an alternate to this task force once it gets going. And we do, we do expect that our SMART director, Transit Director Dwight Beshear will represent SMART. So we'll be hearing more about this as it goes. I also heard from Mayor Lonergan about the interest in also adding freight, not just passengers, but freight. So it's an exciting development. We had our, our last meeting was a work session. It was not a regular council meeting, so I just have a couple of updates for you in addition to speaking about the WES commuter study since our last meeting. Some of us were at the Korean War Memorial 70th Anniversary of the Armistice Commemoration, and the preview of the Korean War Memorial Interpretive Center. We had a great crowd there. I think it was close to 400 people, as I recall, and Governor Kotek also joined us for that ceremony. So I thank everybody for being, being there, and we've heard great things about it. Recently, I just returned from the Oregon Mayors Association Summer Conference in Hood River. It's always a good chance to get together with other mayors, and we have educational sessions that we can choose from. There was another in-depth presentation about how cities and communities across the state are responding to the homelessness crisis. We had a tour of Hood River to see their urban renewal projects with the mayor, which was very interesting. We talked about broadband equity and access, and also ways to work with ODOT to accomplish transportation projects. I also want to thank my husband, Bob. He was invited to be on a panel to talk about being a family member of an elected official. And so he, he really enjoyed that. And, and I think he just told them it was a good experience. Last, and you might be hearing about this from some of the other counselors, we have been having tours with our public work staff of some of the good examples in the region of public safety facilities and recreation facilities. And so over the last two weeks, we've, we've had tours of a number of different facilities. We went to three public safety facilities, three parks and recreation facilities, as we look at what are the possibilities for reimagining our community service block in Wilsonville. So it's, it's been very good information to look at these other cities. Touring with us, our, our city staff and other consultants and architects, and we are, we've, are the cities we've visited have been really good about sharing the pluses, minuses, what they love about it, what they would have done differently. So it's really, a really good experience. We also, my last item is, we had a great, the groundbreaking of the Beckman Road Corridor Project last week. This project is a huge project. It includes building a new bridge over the Beckman Creek and removing culverts that are currently blocking migrating fish. It includes installing new sideways sidewalks, bike lanes, and a creekside trail, and providing other key infrastructure work as the city works with developers to build out the Frog Pond East, West, and South neighborhoods of Wilson, of East Wilsonville that are welcoming hundreds and really thousands of new families to have beautiful places to live, near a school, and with great connections to other neighborhoods and Wilsonville. There are lots of meetings coming up. I won't read all of them. You can go to the, the city website to read that. And I will say that our next meeting is, actually, don't have that date here. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 7, starting at 7:00 PM. And due to the Labor Day holiday, that's why we're having the meeting on a Thursday. That now brings me to the communications segment of our agenda. And I'm very glad to introduce Representative Courtney Neron, who's going to talk to us about the legislative session that has recently concluded. And we appreciate your diligence and hard work representing Wilsonville and our nearby areas.
All right. Thanks so much. It's good to be here. It's good to see all of you and be in person and have an opportunity to share some of the work that I've been doing on behalf of our constituents in Salem. From January to June, we had our legislative session. And end of June feels, in some regards, like it was yesterday, and a month and a half ago feels like years ago now, too. So some of what I'll be reviewing feels fresh, and, you know, a lot happened in those final days. So some of it we're still processing, and bill signings are still happening. And so some of it, hopefully, will be familiar to you as well. And I'm a little new to this. Do I need to just do arrows, like, oh, there we go. Got it. Okay.
Oh, perfect.
So I'm Courtney Neron, and state representative for House District 26, which is Wilsonville, Sherwood, King City, and portions of Tigard on Bull Mountain. It also includes Parrot Mountain in the Newburgh School District area as well. And our legislative session, as I mentioned, this year, so six months every odd-numbered year, one month in the even-numbered years. So upcoming, we'll have a one-month session in 2024. But in 2023, we accomplished a lot, and I'm really grateful to share that despite one of the longest legislative walkouts in history, we were able to deliver on a lot of the top priorities that Oregonians really care about and have been telling us they need action on. So on that list, we were able to deliver policies on building and preserving affordable housing, strengthening our schools, addiction treatment and mental health, addressing barriers to healthcare, expanding access to childcare, ensuring community safety, and supporting economic development. There's so many different topics that we covered, but those being some of the top priorities. And I do have a lot of slides, so I will go quickly, but for anybody that wants to review it more in depth, maybe they'll be able to revisit or ask questions if I, if I skim over anything that you want to know more about.
Sure.
Some of our significant state investments. And as an educator myself, I'm extremely proud of the fact that we were able to stabilize our state school fund at $10.2 billion this year. That means that we are not going to be facing cuts this year. The majority of school districts will be stable. And really, as an educator, that means the world, as we're able to deliver quality education and keep our staff, our workforce, and the services that we're providing students. So the, in addition to the $10.2 stable state school fund, we were able to add $144 million specifically to target literacy. And that will train educators, that will provide for staffing, high-dose tutoring, and really addressing one of the main crises that we know we need to improve upon, and that is our literacy work in our schools. We also, as we are facing a nationwide teacher workforce crisis, were able to deliver $25 million to work toward apprenticeships, supporting teacher trainings, and making sure that our educator workforce has what it needs to also stabilize. And as the Chair of the Education Committee, these dollars just mean so much to the work that we're doing. We also heard far and wide throughout every community in Oregon the importance of housing and homelessness. And so we've invested $2 billion to build homes and stabilize Oregonians at risk of homelessness. We also, in terms of behavioral health, invested $153 million to stabilize mobile crisis units and coordination among providers. And then with so many children in Oregon living in poverty, we've invested $172 million to help families with the cost of living. These are our most at-risk families, and there will be a child tax credit for our most vulnerable families, most at risk of poverty. We invested $4 billion in law enforcement, community safety, and fully funding our Department of Emergency Management. We've invested $260 million to secure Oregon as a global leader in the semiconductor industry. This creates good-paying jobs. It does boost our economy, and it is a long vision for generations to come. Some of my personal priorities that I worked on, in addition to the ones I've just mentioned, are protecting renters in publicly-supported housing. You've heard of the Wood Springs apartment complex in Tigard. That was a case study that we really looked at the systems that led to that, and we addressed it in House Bill 3042 Protections. In House Bill 3043, I worked on the Toxic Free Kids Act modernization, and we are banning toxic chemicals from children's products now. House Bill 3213 bans the sale of cosmetics tested on animals, and is really the way that the industry is moving. So that was a bipartisan effort, and I'm excited to see that. It's been a great year for humane treatment of animals as well. House Bill 2915 prevents irresponsible breeding and promotes humane treatment of dogs and cats, making it illegal to sell puppies and kitties in pet stores. It makes our outdoor preschool programs across the state more accessible, more equitable, and provides them a pathway to licensure. So I could talk more about that, but that was a great, a great project to work on with a really wonderful coalition. House Bill 2719 increases support for domestic violence survivors, and we worked with the Clackamas Women's Services to make sure that our policies in Oregon align with federal policies, removing barriers to funding. House Bill 2805 strengthens our public meeting laws. Again, you know, case studies, we learned a lot from the Newburgh School Board and other entities, making sure that we have laws that where if we need the government ethics commission to pay close attention and intervene, they're able to. And we've also clarified certain public meeting law vagueness. House Bill 3031 supports school ventilation projects, which especially with COVID. COVID did so often shed light onto problems that we knew existed, but really shown where we need to make sure we're investing the most. And ventilation in our schools is critical to healthy schools' attendance and reducing spread of contagions. House Bill 3037 improves data collection for outdoor school programs, again, improving equity for who we're serving with our outdoor education programs in Oregon. And our outdoor, our outdoor school programs are something that so many Oregonians have participated in and are so proud of. So it's a really exciting advancement for that program. All right. Some of my bills did have an alternative path. So as you know, we introduced House Bill 3614 to pause tolling. That ended up being a catalyst for an executive order from the governor, creating a legislative subcommittee instead of a task force. But that subcommittee will ensure additional oversight and study alternatives. And I'm looking forward to hearing news from that subcommittee, which I hope gets going in the coming months. House Bill 3030 is something I'm very excited to say we were able to fund in a budget note. $17 million is now going to increasing childhood nutrition and programs in our schools across the state, getting us closer to universal school meals. It's so difficult for a child to learn when they're hungry, and this is something that our schools provided during COVID and essentially piloted what universal school meals look like. And a lot of states aren't providing universal school meals, so we're getting closer to that now, and I'm really excited about that $17 million we were able to deliver. House Bill 3026 adds graduate students to the Board of Trustees for our universities and really gives part of our workforce a voice. That bill was put into another bill. And then House Bill 2682 is something that I'm very passionate about as an educator, making sure educators have apprenticeship programs, mentorship programs, and the support that they need in the first few years of teaching to ensure that they are set up for success in a lifelong career. And the apprenticeship programs were included in Senate Bill 283, which I may talk about a little bit later as well. I'm going to continue working on a few bills. As the mayor mentioned, not all of our bills were able to pass. And some of the ones I want to bring up here today are the current service level calculation for our education system can be stabilized. I'll continue to work on stabilizing school funding in general, so we don't have yo-yoing from one year to the next. I believe we can get closer to that goal. House Bill 3035 is something that I'm very passionate about. It establishes a crime of threatening mass harm. This would fill a gap that law enforcement and I have worked closely on, and making sure that law enforcement can respond if an individual has made a threat but has not, specifically to carry out an attack of mass harm, but has not acted on it yet. We need our law enforcement to have statutory cover to be able to act effectively. And House Bill 3032 is one that I worked on. It's the Home Share Program that creates a tax exemption for people who are renting out a room in their home as we address the housing crisis. One of the things that I focused on is existing inventory and how we can protect existing inventory, as I mentioned with the tenant protections earlier. And then also, if we think about all the empty bedrooms across the state of Oregon, if even 2% of Oregonians rented out a bedroom, we would be able to address so many of the people who need low-cost places to sleep. And this bill gets us closer to removing stigma of why would I rent out the extra bedroom in my house, to why wouldn't I? House Bill 2951 establishes a grant program, or would have established a grant program for Spanish driver's ed programs. And as the mother of a 16-year-old who's just gone through a driver's ed program, I really value that. But I also really value making sure that driver's education and information for our drivers in Oregon is available across languages, across socioeconomic backgrounds, and making sure that we are really addressing disparities that we know to exist. So often, drivers who do not speak English, or English as a first language, have increased barrier into understanding the rules, the laws of our roads. And we see them experiencing disparate failure rates on our exams for driving, as well as being pulled over and ticketed. All right. Wilsonville had some priorities that we worked on together with your government relations team and continue to work on. Smart Service Territory is one that we've talked about throughout my service to House District 26, and really hoping in the coming months that we are able to button this one up, because we really need to make sure that the conversations between Wilsonville, TRIMET are successful in establishing the trust that needs to be built and rebuilt, and continue working toward a solution to having the appropriate boundaries and service areas and those conversations that are quite complex within changing a boundary. So I'll continue to help facilitate and partner with TRIMET and the city to solve the territory alignment and city boundaries. The airport planning, the Aurora Airport conversation is one that has also been throughout my service. And in this particular session, we heard from the co-chair of the Joint Transportation Committee that this particular bill would not be scheduled for a hearing. We'll continue to have conversations about what the right path forward is for the Aurora Airport conversation. And then the West, as the mayor mentioned, it's so exciting that we will be talking with a wide group of people about the next steps. It was very disappointing. Representative Mannix and I were in conversation throughout session, hoping that our bill would be successful in looking at those next steps for West. Instead, we will do that interim work group, work in partnership with those that the mayor has mentioned. And then the Oregon Regionally Significant Industrial Sites is one that I introduced a bill, and Representative Lively as well introduced a similar bill. It has broad coalition support and was a project that simply didn't receive funding. I'll continue to have conversations about how important it is that we get our land ready for industrial site readiness. And the city of Wilsonville's been a strong leader in that conversation. So I want to thank the city for that partnership. So I'll go a little faster through these session focuses. We've got detail. How much time do I have left?
Let's just keep going.
Okay. And we've got quite a bit of detail on these slides. So if anybody's interested in further conversation, this is just dialing in on that first slide that I offered with a list of our top priorities and some of the bills under each category. So in terms of affordable housing, we've got our investments that we've made in building, on prior emergency investments in housing, making sure that we're addressing homelessness response and prevention, as well as our inventory. And then we've got one that I think is kind of interesting, and I'll be interested to hear how the city of Wilsonville engages with. House Bill 2984, there, one up from the bottom, which allows our local governments to convert commercial buildings to residential housing. And so want to make sure that I'm in conversation with the city of Wilsonville about that one. Rent stabilization is one that I care a lot about. So skipping to the last one, we've got Senate Bill 611 is one that I chief-sponsored. It will limit our annual rent increases to the lesser of either 10% or 7% plus the Consumer Price Index. Now, this is one that we still need to have conversations about, the skyrocketing rent. We have so many constituents telling us they're working two jobs, but their rent is, you know, rising faster than their income. And within this bill, we have a conversation to continue, I believe, and that is that for any apartment younger than 15 years old, this cap does not apply. In Sherwood, in Wilsonville, we have some apartment complexes that do not fall under this cap. And so in those areas, we are seeing, I would say, a price gouging of rent going up. One complex in Sherwood, I'll give as an example, if the tenant signed the lease within the first, I believe it was one or two months of the lease renewal, it would go up only 32%. If they waited beyond two months, I believe it was going to go up 50%. So the rents are rising exponentially, and we really need to make sure we're looking out for tenants in all of our units, but especially those that are younger than 15 years old. And I will move on to the strong schools conversation that I could talk all day about. And so I'll quickly just say that some of the highlights of the year are educator workforce investments, future planning. So many people, students included, are asking for financial education, personal finance, as well as what we've added in this one, career path skills. We've invested, again, in early literacy, and one that I'm excited about as we face our teacher, nationwide teacher crisis, workforce crisis, is the Interstate Teacher Mobility Compact. If somebody is teaching or has a teacher's license in the state of Oregon, but that license is from a different state within the compact, they now may work in Oregon. And then one that I worked very hard on is the last on this list, full days of school, poor students with disabilities. All too often, we are hearing that students are being denied portions of their school day, which they have federal rights to, civil rights to access equal school. And this ends, ideally, this will end the unjust practice of abbreviated school days, and make sure that all of our students are able to access a fair, free, appropriate public education. All right. Addiction treatment and behavioral health, again, a conversation we could talk a lot about. So many of us know somebody that needs support. I'll highlight the opioid harm reduction package, House Bill 2395, which makes, increases access to naloxone. We still have a ways to go. We still have conversations to have. But these bills, including 2645, will help to address the fentanyl crisis in Oregon. I'm also thrilled to say that we have stabilized funding for the 988 suicide prevention line in the state. We have addressed Measure 110. More needs to be done, and so we can have lots of conversation about that ongoing. But we've begun to address the flaws in Measure 110 implementation as we can as a legislature. And so excited that we've been able to do first steps. And then we've invested in the behavioral health care delivery, again, aligning coordination and response. Access to healthcare, I'll highlight House Bill 2002 that codifies abortion rights that Oregonians had under Roe v. Wade. It also protects our medical provider's ability to provide care to their patients. Nurse staffing levels, this bill was just signed on the 15th of August, ensures safe nursing staffing levels to support our workforce and our patients. We've got multiple efforts to lower costs, successful in those efforts were House Bill 2725 and Senate Bill 192, creating regulations and transparency for pharmacy benefit managers, and ideally lowering the cost of prescription drugs for Oregonians and protecting our small pharmacies. Our PEP bill has been back each time that I've served, and I'm glad to see it's crossed the finish line. Glad to say it's crossed the finish line, our HIV treatment bill. This will improve access to life-saving HIV prevention treatment. And the universal healthcare plan, government's NONS board, is developed now with next steps on Measure 111 that voters have passed, and we'll be having that board look at the ways that we can make sure that Oregonians have access to their constitutional right to healthcare. Access to childcare is something that I've worked very hard on. We have expanded home-based childcare, or protected home-based childcare and rentals. We have invested and expanded childcare facilities, and we are looking at childcare zoning and land use as we build out industrial areas. For example, we need to make sure that there's childcare accessible for our workforce. And then the Oregon Kids Credit that I mentioned briefly, $1,000 per child annually for qualifying families, and these are our most vulnerable families. Community safety, we care a lot about. We've got strengthening our public defense in Senate Bill 37, and gun violence prevention in House Bill 2005, which will prohibit the sale, manufacturing, and importing of ghost guns. And then we have bias crimes addressed in House Bill 3443, and driving under the influence addressed in House Bill 2316. In terms of economic development, we're thrilled about the CHIPS Act, making Oregon competitive for, and I believe it's the year anniversary of the CHIPS Act passing federally, but these investments that Oregon has made signal that we are ready and welcoming of the industry to expand in Oregon. There's good-paying jobs. I want to see gender equity included in our conversations in this sector. And so I'll continue to talk about the importance of co-locating with childcare, so we can make sure that we increase from, I believe it's 18 to 20% women in this sector, to making sure that these jobs are available to all. Our Economic Incentive Modernization Package is very important to those with conversations around enterprise zones and strategic investment programs. And then our broadband expansion in House Bill 3201. We can thank our senator for his advocacy in so many of our broadband and cybersecurity spaces. And I worked on this as well and really appreciate the work that went into making sure that there are financial assistance programs that support broadband access and that align our goals with federal requirements to establish accountability programming. And then just want to celebrate the children's agenda that I advocated for was funded. There are a lot of things that we did do for families, but I want to highlight our family preservation project at Coffee Creek Correctional Facility is so important to keeping some of our most vulnerable families together when they have a parent in custody. And this program is serving so many of our families at interrupting generational incarceration and making sure that mothers, when they return to their families, are still connected to their children. It's a beautiful program. I'm thrilled we were able to get it funded. I'm also an advocate for the court-appointed special advocates. Those are advocates for our children in foster care, and I will continue to make sure that this program is funded. And every time that we have, that I have served, we have had to really raise the alarm bells that this needs to be a top priority. So hopefully, this becomes something that is in our rollout budgets ongoing now in the future. And then outdoor preschool licensure, as I mentioned, I'm thrilled we now have pathways for those that are making the most of our beautiful outdoor spaces in Oregon. We can celebrate our pause on tolling, as I mentioned, and ideally, this will really reveal some of the ways that the planning for ODOT needs to improve significantly, making sure that we are having a voice of our toll-impacted communities at the table that is heard and is responded to. And I want to thank everybody that has stood up for this particular conversation in the past and ongoing. It will be an ongoing conversation, and I will stay engaged with it. It's one that I know we all care a lot about. For anybody that's interested, I have a constituent coffee coming up on August 26th, so this Saturday, and would love to invite you all and our constituents to join me at the Wilsonville Public Library from 11:00 to noon for coffee and conversation. I really love doing these and have tried to do them monthly. So town halls and coffees throughout the district in this time of this month, it will be in Wilsonville at our library. And then my contact information, I'll leave up for a little bit as we take questions, but really, it's been wonderful to connect with you all throughout the session and my service and continue to have an open-door conversation policy with all of you and all of my constituents. So please reach out with, if you're listening, please reach out if you have a question or comment. Email is a great way to reach out to us, but we also have the phone, the website, and Instagram. And then Linktree is actually one that I really appreciate. That brings you to a whole bunch of different opportunities and different avenues for engagement as well. With that, that is my slide deck, and I know that I've taken quite a bit of time, so I want to apologize and thank you for listening. I hope that it's been interesting and that we can continue these conversations, but I'm happy to take a few questions before I go.
Well, I just want to thank you for spending this time with us and preparing this information. I am sure we will get a copy of your slide deck.
I think so. I think this is...
So we can, we can share that with all the councilors, so that's, that's going to be a really great reference. And I just want to recap the significant advances that you've made in so many areas. And one area that affects all of us is our children.
I think so. I think this is...
So we can, we can share that with all the councilors, so that's, that's going to be a really great reference. And I just want to recap the significant advances that you've made in so many areas. And one area that affects all of us is our children, our families and our education system. And Representative Neuron has made unprecedented gains for those children, and that's going to help our state for generations to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank you for the slide about the constituent coffee, which is coming up this Saturday, and hope everybody can join us there and we can ask more questions at the, study the slides, will come with some good questions to your coffee. And before, you know, with that, I'd like to ask any of the councilors if they have a question for Representative Neuron today.
Well, I, I would...
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilor Linville.
It's like you haven't been busy, right? So thank you for all of your time and your effort and for staying close to us and representing our issues. Certainly, those that didn't make it through, I'm really excited to hear your commitment to continuing some of the priorities that we have and on our legislative agenda, which I'm, I know you've memorized and take to bed with you every night. So we do appreciate that. And as the mayor said, the West, the extension of the West is, is a long-term project that I think we, and I don't think we can forget really the Boone Bridge. I mean, I think that started out as being a real need for management of traffic and for safety. And not, and then tolling took over and we almost lost sight of what we were really after in the very beginning. So I hope we can continue to keep that as a priority. And I know as you've driven back and forth, you've seen it on a firsthand basis. So we continue to have those issues. So what do you need from us on an ongoing basis to help you better represent what our issues are outside of what we publish in our legislative agenda? If you could wave the magic wand and say, oh, the Wilsonville City Council, if they could only do this, that would be a really big help to me.
Oh, gosh, I want to thank you actually, just right back at you for how hard you all have worked at staying in touch with me. And I've welcomed and just so appreciated our conversations throughout the session. Counselor Linville and I have met every month. Summer has been harder for us to connect, but, and then, you know, our conversations, Mayor, you know, as needed, and when we run into each other in the neighborhood, they've just always really helped inform me. And every time I have a conversation with any of you, it really does help me understand what you're focusing on in your personal advocacy. The stories we bring really help inform the work that we do. And each of you has such important conversations with me about a variety of topics. So I welcome those regular conversations and, you know, spur-of-the-moment outreach, you can call me. And so, but I've, I've really appreciated the good communication in the Boone's Ferry Messenger, in our emails to each other, in our conversations, and just continuing to highlight things that are arising. You know, as I had questions about the property across the street and the developments, you know, I could call any one of you and you could tell me how it was going. As we've had, you know, different issues arise, there have been, there's been such a responsiveness. So continuing being responsive, I, I really just have appreciated each and every one of you and the, the service that you bring to the city and the way that you've communicated with me. So I welcome continued conversation as we've had.
So I want you to know that, and I think we, we've had plenty of conversation about this, but there is still concern that what Governor Kotek did in putting the moratorium on the tolling was a way to preempt having a legislative, you know, concrete bill and that it really is just a placeholder. And ODOT is continuing to move down the road with their planning and implementation. So it, it would be nice to hear from you whether that's your perspective or do, do you need to kind of look into that in terms of what ODOT is continuing to do?
I'll definitely continue to look into what ODOT is doing. I do believe that having a legislative committee that's been set up is a helpful oversight. So within the legislature, we now have a committee that will be meeting. I absolutely was hopeful that the bill would move forward as is. When it became apparent that there was not going to be a path for that bill, I'm grateful that we were able to get an executive order. So I do sense that there's a partnership and an understanding that there needed to be a pause. And Wilsonville has advocated phenomenally for that pause. And then, as has Clackamas County more broadly, as have so many people that would be impacted by a program that is half-baked. And so I do think that we need to continue monitoring what the legislative task force or the legislative committee does. And, you know, in the short session, every legislator has two bills that we can bring forward, or every representative has two bills that we can bring forward as personal bills. And I'll continue to look at what the top priorities are for the district if there needs to be more done than, you know, that I'm a partner in this conversation. But I absolutely believe that we need to make sure that ODOT is accountable to the safety, the community impacts, the diversion conversation, the environmental impacts, all of the things that we have raised as community that, you know, who is impacted? How are they going to impact a low-income tolling program? For example, if this does move forward, we want to see the details. And we have people who are very engaged on this and can really track alongside their legislators and help keep, you know, the legislature informed of the, the district priorities. So, yeah, I'll continue to, to track the, the work that the legislative task force does. We have Representative Anessa Hartman, who will be serving the Clackamas County area for that particular legislative committee. And then we'll also, you know, make sure that, that ODOT does their work and it's laid out in multiple different documents at this point, and we just need to see them deliver and follow through, including the communities that are impacted every step of the way.
Thank you. And I know we're, we're going to follow up with the constituent coffee with more questions, but I do want to close with one comment about the housing task force. And of course, we know that we need more housing across Oregon. And I really appreciate the work that you, Senator Woods, have done to advocate for smart housing, smart housing that will serve people well and that will reflect what cities know about building housing to protect families so their housing is not in a floodplain, so they have shade, so that we have the type of housing that will serve us well. And I am very concerned that there is not a, as I understand, there still is not a representative representing cities and planners, you know, from a city perspective on that housing task force. So we would really like to make sure that that viewpoint, that, and I also want to thank city of Wilsonville planning staff who engaged a lot during the session. But I'm very concerned about not, maybe not having enough representation from, from cities across Oregon on that task force.
Thank you for naming that, and we can talk more about that, and I can elevate that as well.
Thank you.
And yes, we did work, I'm reading what you're, what you're sharing here. We did work very hard on making sure that...
Yes, and let's keep that momentum because we have...
Housing planning is done well.
We have a lot of building capacity within our cities and these programs like you described about the, the renting a room and, and ways of making more of the space within our cities for families in places that have infrastructure and to maintain our urban tree canopy.
Yes.
So thank you very much for spending all this time with us, Representative Neuron, and we'll see you on Saturday.
Yes, thank you so much again. I'll stay a little bit longer, but I just really appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Always good to talk to you.
Well, I, I think you'd enjoy hearing our next presentation.
I will. I'm very excited about the next presentation.
Good, and thank you so much. So we are honored to have a representative, three people who are here with us today from the Vietnamese community of Oregon. And our speaker, and I hope you will guide me in my pronunciation, I should have asked you this when we spoke at the break, of your name, Tao Tu?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and Council President Akro. I am Tao Tu, and I am president of the Vietnamese community of Oregon. The Vietnamese community of Oregon represents more than 37,000 Vietnamese-American living in Oregon. I'm here today on behalf of the Vietnamese community of Oregon to sincerely request the recognition of our heritage and freedom flags of our community as a symbol of Vietnamese-American living in Oregon, living in Wilsonville. And it is the flag, the symbol of the flag. We do not request you to fly this flag. Yeah, so we emphasize about that. Would you allow me to read the suggestive proclamation? I will do so.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you. Whereas Vietnamese refugees have proudly resided in the city of Wilsonville, seeing the conclusion of the Vietnam War, whereas Vietnamese-Americans have put their full energy building the city of Wilsonville in multiple prominent areas, including industries, economy, culture, education and military services. Whereas Vietnamese-Americans have counted the state of Oregon as being their second heart, mind and family homeland, whereas Vietnamese-Americans had embraced Vietnamese customs and traditions, had been continually brought it through generations, whereas a large number of the Oregon's Vietnamese-Americans repeatedly embraced the yellow and tree breast dry heritage and freedom flag as a symbol of Vietnamese-American community. May I continue reading?
Please.
Yeah. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Wilsonville, do hereby recognize the Vietnamese-American heritage and freedom flag as the official flag of Vietnamese-American organization in the city of Wilsonville. We encourage all to join the recognition of the cultural honorable Vietnamese heritage and freedom flag. Thank you for letting me read in the suggestive proclamation. Thank you for letting us join in your city meeting today.
Can I get a picture of you?
Yes, thank you for joining.
Could hold the flag.
Yes. Let's get a picture.
Would all the councilors join us, please, for a picture?
Yeah, it's a big flag. We can, we can do it, we'll just do it behind the poster there. Yeah, right here. You want to hop in there? I can take a picture here. I'll hold you though. Just put it right here. Yeah, a little this way, a little bit. Yeah, a little bit more in there, Counselor Berry?
You've got more room in here. There you go.
Ah, it's perfect, yeah. Okay, everybody on me. One, two, three. Thank you. Do you want?
All right. Thank you. So that brings us to our consent agenda, right? Oh, sorry, thank you. I had a feeling I skipped something. That brings us to our counselor comments, liaison reports and meeting announcements, starting with Council President Akroval.
Thank you. Let's see, I think I'll, I'll just move through a few items that have happened since our last council meeting, but it's, it's actually been rather busy. And, and the mayor mentioned, you know, several events that multiple council members were able to participate in. But in addition, let's see, there, there was a Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting last week that I was able to attend. And during that meeting, we received an overview of the draft findings from Metro Regional Freight Delay and Commodities Movement Study, which was interesting. And then, I guess, in, in addition to our conversation about tolling this evening here with Representative Neuron, we also received information about a draft tolling nexus project list and what might be considered to go on that project list from Washington County's perspective. Of course, I believe Clackamas County and individual cities are also working on that, the tolling nexus project list, and that's specifically looking at diversion projects that, that may be considered. Today, I attended an urban renewal town center feasibility, feasibility study task force meeting, and we received information about kind of the potential area capacity. I believe the last time council received a report from our Economic Development Department about that, it was quite a range, right, for the capacity for a potential urban renewal area there, and that's getting dialed in. So today, the, the task force was able to get some more information about that, as well as some documentation about findings for blight in the area. And I understand from the timeline that soon, I believe next month, council will be getting more information about that as the project continues to move forward. Last week, I was able to drop in on the Beckman Creek Interceptor and Trail Open House that was held here at City Hall. And that was good to just interact with some of our community members and see the information and materials that were being presented by city staff on that project, because it's something that we've heard a lot about. And I know the city's been trying to push out some of that information in Boone's Ferry Messenger and, of course, the project website. There is, if, you know, the project website, there is a, a ability to sign up for text notifications on the project. If people, you know, really want to, to keep close contact on, on what's happening, you can get text messages with information. So that's something to check out. And we were supposed to have, last week, a meeting for the Wilsonville Childcare Providers Consortium, which is a new group that's kind of being established to gain some more information about the childcare providers in Wilsonville, and that's attached to one of our council goals. However, because of the AC issues here in City Hall, we had to postpone that meeting, but we're looking at rescheduling for the week following Labor Day. So I will stay tuned to that because I was planning on attending that meeting, and I'll, I'll try to attend the meeting whenever it's scheduled here after Labor Day. And that is it for me. And that is it for me. Someone going to be talking, though, about the big event on Thursday night in the park. Do we have somebody that's talking about that?
Yes.
Great, then I will leave it. I'll, I'll just leave that little trailer hanging there for, for the future. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Counselor Linville?
Council President Akroval, I just have a quick question about your, because I wasn't able to go to the Beckman Open House. Was there, was there a fairly sizable turnout of citizens?
You know, it's an open house, so people are able to filter through, through the evening. And I think it was open for about two hours. I wasn't there for the entirety of the two hours, but I did see a number of people come through. And I think that, you know, some people came in having questions specifically about the trail project or the interceptor project. Some people also saw Beckman and came in with some questions about the, the road project, too, right? And so, there, for our community members, that, there's a lot of activity happening in that area, and I understand people wanting to get information about how that might affect them and their commutes and just the, the patterns that they hold, because there will be some major changes this next year, right? And, and it benefits everyone if we can, if we can help increase the awareness of what to expect and anticipate. It's not going to always be pleasant, but I think once we get on the other side of it and we get those road improvements done, we will all be very glad to, to have that work completed within our city.
Yeah, I think that the, I, as part of my report, I, I also attended the groundbreaking with the mayor and Council President Akroval and Counselor Dunwell, and had a little bit of conversation with the project leadership. And we had that kind of conversation about, it sounds like a great project right now, it's going to go on for a long time, and so we probably are going to be hearing from our, from our citizens about the disruption.
Inconvenience during the process?
Only a little.
To gain better.
Yeah, but I think it's really important, I think, for us to continue to get the message out that this is such a large safety issue, because that road is just, it just is really unsafe, especially in the wintertime. So, I, so I have not attended any meeting since our last meeting. I've been waiting for the Greater Portland Inc., Small Cities Consortium to be announcing their meetings, and they have not. I do have, I'm excited that I will be attending the economic summit that's coming up in September, and so I, I will give you more information after I attend that. So, we have a Metro Community Enhancement Committee meeting on the 29th, and I have the Opioid Settlement Board meeting on, on the 6th of September. Those meetings are from 10:00 in the morning until 1:00. So, they're, and they're educational and informative, and we're, it's taking us a while to get to the place of really making decisions about how to spend the money. And then, I just wanted to note that before we meet again, August 31st is International Overdose Awareness Day. And it's a day to wear a little purple ribbon or a purple t-shirt. So, while I didn't bring them, if you have access to a little person, purple ribbon, that would be a good thing to do. It's really trying to bring attention to what is, is an incredible crisis. And I think the opioid settlement, the difficulty that the Opioid Settlement Board is having with trying to make decisions about, even though there is millions of dollars involved, it's where, where do you really have the greatest impact? And how do you start to make a difference? So, so that will be, that will be a day for us to just really put, put that out in front of the community as well. And it would be nice, I think, if we could get something maybe on our website, if there is, there are some resources. So, I'll have a conversation with some of our staff about that. And that is my report.
Thank you, Counselor. And now moving to Counselor Berry.
Thank you. So, the highlight for me for the last couple of weeks has been to participate on the tours of our public safety facilities that are in our nearby neighbors, and then also the park facilities. I think that it's really important, especially being a newer city councillor, to be able to, with all our other councillors, to think about what is the vision for our city for near term and long term. And it's important to see what others, our neighboring cities have for facilities and find out what those strengths are and some things that maybe they wish they had done more. Like, I kept hearing everybody wished they had more storage. So, that was really, that was insightful for me. And, let's see, coming up is on next Tuesday, the 29th, the Community Enhancement Committee, and then on the 6th, the Tourism Committee. So, I'm looking forward to that. And then I have the community and the park announcement. So, this Thursday on the 24th, from 5:30 to 8:30, the city is hosting a community park in the Town Center Park. It used to be known as the Block Party, and it's a fun community event. There's live music with Anna Gilbert, food trucks, activity stations, educational information about city projects, games, and more. So, at 5:30, our transit agency, known as Smart, will host a free minor bike repair workshop. So, if you need to have your bike tires filled with air, have your brakes tightened, or lubricated the chain, please come. At 6 o'clock, there'll be a community bike ride for everybody, all ages. So, bring your bike and bring a lawn chair or a picnic blanket, and, and enjoy the evening with the rest of our community.
Smart is also bringing back the popular train.
Oh, sweet.
That will be back.
Oh, the...
The little train that goes around in circles. That was very popular, and people were disappointed that we didn't have it last year.
Duck race.
Duck race.
They did the duck race, did they not?
If you say it is, there will be rubber duckies there. Okay, yes.
I think so.
Run by parks.
I love the way the, the children get into the water and follow their duck.
Or push water behind it.
Always good to be encouraging.
Yes.
So, now to Counselor Dunwell.
So, please humor me for a little bit longer comments tonight. First of all, I'd really like to recognize the Vietnamese community for being here tonight. Thank you. Two of my direct report employees in my professional life have been first-generation Vietnamese refugees, and both Stacy Nguyen and Kevin Nguyen, not related, but both very, very close to me. I have heard their stories from their families, and they are heartbreaking, encouraging, inspiring, and very moving. So, thank you for being here tonight. And then I'd also like to layer upon what Counselor Linville mentioned about August 31st, and to add on to that, today is Fentanyl Awareness Day. And I'd actually like to read to you, the Senate unanimously passed the resolution designating today, and I'd like to read to you the statements from both Senator Grassley and Senator Feinstein. And Senator Grassley said, "Fentanyl overdoses are taking a tragic toll on families. I'm working to tackle the illegal production and distribution of this deadly drug from multiple directions through legislation to close loopholes, and by putting pressure on the administration to enforce the laws, hold adversaries like China accountable, and secure the southern border. Driving awareness about the fentanyl flooding our communities adds momentum to our efforts to end this devastating epidemic." And then from Senator Feinstein, "Too many families know the pain of losing a loved one to fentanyl overdose. Those deaths are often the result of people unknowingly using fentanyl that has been made to look like a prescription drug. With fentanyl-related deaths rising each year, our resolution will hopefully save lives by raising awareness of the dangers of this drug. It is important we pay attention," and I know I've spoken to this in the past.
Right.
Thank you. That takes me to something else. Counselor Linville and I both attended the Rotaries Through a Child's Eyes a week ago Saturday.
Akroval.
Akroval, yes. Akroval, Counselor Akroval. Kristen, hello. You sit next to me all the time. So, it was at Coffee Creek Correctional Institution, which is the only women's prison in the state of Oregon. And the Rotary, the Wilsonville Rotary does an amazing job that, again, I've said it before, it's life-changing, and it continues to be life-changing every time I go. Games, crafts, family time, and as we were walking out, hugs and tears. The partnership with Coffee Creek is really important, and Representative Neron mentioned CASA and some of the other programs that are there that tie to Coffee Creek. Those are really important, because these women, all of these women, at some point will come back into our communities. And everything that we can do to enable success for them as they leave is really important. And these, these wonderful families, some of them come for, they drive for hours. We heard stories of them waking up at 4:30 in the morning so that they could drive to be there at 11 o'clock, when they could get in to see their family members. So, again, very moving. And Counselor Akroval, thank you for going with, again, this year. It was really wonderful. I also went to, I was on the Public Safety Tours, Beckman Road Bridge, or Corridor Groundbreaking, the Korean War Memorial Ceremony, which was wonderful, and the, our wonderful partnership with the French Prairie Forum was in July. We did not meet in August, but again, it's always the partnership that we have with the, our adjacent communities in Donald, and Aurora, and Hubbard, and some of these other areas is really important. We can never forget who they are and that we are part of that larger community. And then finally, I do, I do get to announce that there is this amazing thing that Parks and Rec does every, every summer, Free Movies in the Park. The last one is a movie called Strange World. It's at 8:30 this Friday, the 25th, in the River Shelter. And go to Wilsonville.com website, explore Wilsonville.com website, and you can learn all about it.
Thank you, Counselor. Lots going on, especially in the middle of summer, that we've accomplished a lot. Thank you to all of our councilors. So, that brings us to our consent agenda. If the city attorney would please read the items.
Resolution Number 3073, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving a construction contract with Buell Recreation LLC for the Sophia Park Playground Replacement Project. Resolution Number 3078, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Three Kings Environmental, Inc., for the demolition of the Kiva Building, CIP Number 8153. Resolution Number 3080, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing South Metro Area Regional Transit, Smart, to purchase one battery electric replica trolley from the, from Shetky Northwest Sales, Inc., and minutes of July 7, of the July 17, 2023 city council meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
There are seconds?
All second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion passes unanimously. We will now move to our public hearing. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 3046.
Resolution Number 3046, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville establishing and imposing just and equitable parks, recreation, and off-street trail facility system development charges, and repealing Resolution Number 2133.
Thank you. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start up with a, start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then, I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask if anyone who is on Zoom who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. For those in the audience, please fill out a speaker card and provide to the city recorder. For those on Zoom, if you want to provide public testimony remotely during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone to notify the city recorder you wish to speak when the time for public testimony is called. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call 1-669-900-6833. And when prompted, enter webinar ID number 81536056468, which we have on the screen. Both numbers are available for you there. When you begin your testimony, please state your name and address for the record, or you may state that your address is as provided to staff. After each person testifies, councilors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified, or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Council deliberates, and I will announce a result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone has, before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a virtual warning, visual warning, when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open, and we'll hear our staff presentation.
Chris, did you want me to take over?
Yeah, go for it. Sorry, I was trying to get my screen ready. So, this is, I'm Chris Hammer, Hammerman, Parks and Recreation Director, and I'm joined by our FCS Group team, project team, and that is Tim Wood, project manager, and, yeah, take it away, Tim.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll share my screen so that, so that we can just share this PowerPoint, if that's all right. Okay. All right, so forgive me if any of this is review for council. Thank you for your time tonight, council. But forgive me if this is review. We have, we've gone over a handful of these numbers before, but want to make sure that you all are up to speed and that the public is up to speed as well. So, we're FCS Group. We've, we've contracted with the city to update your parks system development charges, and this evening, we're going to go through how we got to our conclusions and, and then discuss with any questions. So, our agenda tonight, just give you the SDC basics, your current parks SDC, then we'll go through some of how we, how we generated the results, review projected growth in demand, the improvement fee cost basis, the reimbursement fee cost basis, and finally, reveal your calculated parks SDC. We'll give you some comparisons to go by, to understand how neighboring jurisdictions are handling their parks SDCs, and then we'll talk next steps, to the extent that council would like to do that. So, key characteristics of SDCs, they're one-time charges, paid at the time of development. So, typically, when folks pull permits, SDCs are paid. They're available for all five major utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and in the case of what we're talking about this evening, parks. SDCs are for capital purposes only, both in their calculation and their use. You'll see how it's used in calculation and in their use. So, so SDCs can't be used for ongoing O and M or... So SDCs can't be used for ongoing O and M or. They include both existing and future infrastructure cost components. And again, we'll get into that a little bit more later in the presentation. And then finally, SDCs are for system facilities, not for local facilities. And in Oregon, we're very lucky to have a strong framework set out in state statute. ORS 223297 through 316 is the SDC Act, which gives us really strong sideboards to work with when we're calculating SDC. So that's really useful, helpful for us, and make sure that we can provide the city with legally defensible fee. Generally speaking, an SDC is made up of two major components, the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee. Reimbursement fee typically includes existing infrastructure with unused capacity. Then we quantify the cost of that unused capacity and divide that by system growth. So in this case, we're talking mostly about residential equivalents. Likewise, with the improvement fee, we're looking at the cost of new facilities, including those that are intended to accommodate new growth in the city. The financial or the monetary cost of that is then divided by, again, the growth in system demand. Then we add those two components together, along with some other things, and we'll get into details about that later. And that is your system development charge. And your current system development charge, as it stands, this is just a sample of a handful of different land uses that might be paying system development charges. So the one that we typically will detail is the single-family detached housing type, which is $7,349 per dwelling unit currently. You can see that that's charged in a bunch of other different types of land use here, but a single-family detached is typically our basis for comparison. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Zek, who did all of our analysis. So he's going to be able to run you through that.
Okay, thank you very much, Tim. So as Tim was saying, you know, the system development charge is basically a simple division calculation. So the top, top section there, you see that's labeled cost basis is the numerator of the calculation. It totals to be just shy of 80 million. The denominator of the calculation is the growth in residential equivalents, and we'll talk about what that is a little later. But that's 8,626 residential equivalents over the planning period. And that gives us a total SDC per residential equivalent of $9,242, which, if applied to the land uses based on their relative occupancy, would result in a single-family charge of 25,000. However, that is just the maximum parks SDC that we've calculated, and you can set any SDC up to that amount. So staff has recommended a much lower charge of $5,167 per residential equivalent, which works out to be $14,000 for a single-family residence. Okay, so a residential equivalent is the denominator of the SDC calculation, and it basically represents our efforts at equating the demands of a resident and an additional employee added to the city of Wilsonville. What we do in this analysis, I'll just describe it briefly, is we look at the different patterns of commuting for workers who work in Wilsonville or who live inside Wilsonville and work outside. And we compare all of their different levels of demand in Wilsonville. And that gives us a simple equivalency factor, which you see at the very bottom of this table, bottom right, .05 residents per employees. And that tells us the relative demand of an additional employee added to Wilsonville. And a good way of putting this is that it would take 20 additional employees to equal the demand of one resident. But we do, that does represent some incremental demand, so we're going to charge the SDC for non-residential land uses as well. So here is the projected growth throughout the planning period as described in the Parks Master Plan. We have population at the top, the number of employees are in the second row. Residential equivalent employees, that's the number of employees multiplied by that .05 equivalency factor. At the very bottom is the total residential equivalents between 2021 and 2036. And that's where you get the growth in residential equivalents of 8,626, which is the denominator of our SDC calculation. So the denominator is settled, so now we start looking at the numerator, which takes the form of both the improvement fee and the reimbursement fee. So looking at the improvement fee first, we basically do a level of service analysis based on how much, how much parks and acres of parks the city of Wilsonville has and miles of trail, and how many it will have at the end of the planning period. And we use that to generate a fair level of service target to apply to developers. And using those level of service standards, it works out that 100% of the additional park acres and miles of trail are eligible for inclusion in the SDC. And this level of service analysis also identifies the number of park acres and trail miles that are, we already have available for developers. And you can see that in the very bottom right, 62 acres of parks and natural areas and just over one mile of trail. So now, taking that eligibility calculation and applying it to the project list, the level of service calculations worked out so that 100% of the additional park acres and trail mile projects are eligible for inclusion in the improvement fee, which is just shy of $68 million, as shown on this table, which shows you the projects that add park acres and trail miles. The other type of project that we looked at is what we call an infill project. And these projects don't add park acres or trail miles to the system. Instead, what they do is they add or replace amenities to your existing park system. They get a lower level of service calculation because they're not providing new facilities. They're just improving the facilities you have already. When we did our analysis here, we can see that at the very bottom, the total project cost there, 36. almost 6 million. And the SDC eligible cost is just over 8.6 million for those infill projects. So taking the additional expansion projects, those projects that add park acres and trail miles, and adding them to the infill projects, which just add amenities to your existing park system, that gives us a total improvement fee cost basis of 76.5 million. Reimbursement fee calculation, that's the other half of the SDC, as Tim mentioned. And it's a much simpler calculation here. What we did is we looked at the inventory of total parks, acres, and trail miles. And we looked at records of the historical city expenditures on those park acres and trail miles. And doing a simple division there, the expenditures divided by the inventory gives us an investment amount per unit of park acres or trail miles that the city has put into its park system. We take that, that unit cost, and we apply it to the number of reimbursable units. That's the additional park acres and trail miles that are already available for growth. And that gives us the reimbursable amount for those park acres and trail miles on the far right, which you can see totals to be just shy of 2.4 million. One small adjustment before we get back to the final calculation. So you can see here, the full improvement fee cost basis there of 76.5 million. We are removing the estimated improvement fee fund balance of just shy of 3 million. And that represents, so any, any SDCs that you have still in your fund balances represent projects that you didn't finish that were on your last project list. And so we want to make a conservative assumption that those projects got carried over to the new list, and therefore, we don't want to double charge for any projects that you didn't complete. So that reduces the improvement fee cost basis to 73.5 million. And finally, we're back to the full calculated SDC, now that you've seen all of the different pieces in their detail. One thing I did not mention is the compliance costs, which you can see there in the cost basis section. And that represents the cost of administering the SDC program and calculating the fee. And that's an allowable inclusion, according to the state statute. The, so once again, the total cost basis, just shy of 80 million. The growth in residential equivalents is 8,626. That gives us an SDC of $9,240 per residential equivalent. But staff has recommended a lower charge of $5,167 per residential equivalent, which works out to be $14,000 for a single-family residence. Okay, and then lastly here, this, this big chart here will just show you how you can apply the parks SDC to your non-residential land uses. What this, what this chart does is it looks at the average employment density per 1,000 square feet. So how many employees are going to be using each 1,000 square feet of these different land uses? And using that calculation on the last slide, that gives us an SDC per 1,000 square feet for any non-residential land uses. On the far right is the staff recommended level for those charges. All right, and then here is the comparison. You can see Wilsonville's existing parks SDC in the far left here in the dark blue, and the max defensible on the far right. So right now, Wilsonville is well below any of its comparable jurisdictions. If it went to the full level, it would be above its comparable jurisdictions, although certainly not above, not too far above some of the highest SDCs in the state. Just relative to its comparable jurisdictions, it would be pretty high. However, at the staff recommended level, that would put Wilsonville's parks SDC right in the middle of these comparables you can see here. All right, and then, Tim, if you want to take back over.
Yeah, so at this stage, we're talking about next steps, implementation steps, that kind of thing. Staff has recommended that the city implement this SDC by January 1st of 2024. And going forward, we and staff both recommend that the city index parks SDCs on an annual basis based on construction cost index, just to make sure that these charges are tracking with the growth in the cost of actually improving parkland. With that, we'll take any questions from council or the public.
Councillor Linville.
Thank you for the presentation. It's something, we learn something new every time we hear it. I think it's important to note that this is not the first time that the council has discussed this recommendation. You know, we had work session, and we've had some discussion prior. I think maybe for our citizens, it would be helpful to, for them to understand how the system develop, the parks system development charges are collected. Some people may not understand exactly how that happens. And then I think the other thing that might be helpful for you to discuss just briefly is the outreach that was done, both with our builders, our local builders, and just the amount of outreach and the kind of outreach that was done prior to the council getting to this point of making this recommendation.
Yeah, Tim, do you?
Chris, did you want to, yeah, go ahead, Chris, sorry.
Well, no, if you want to talk about the first part, I can, I can talk about the outreach.
I was going to say, you go ahead and talk about outreach, and then we can discuss.
Sure. So we had a, you know, we began this process back in February, I believe, and we had an open house in June. And we reached out to all the local builders and developers, letting them know that, you know, this was going to be the process. As you mentioned, Councillor Linville, we've had two work sessions to go over it with council. And so, yeah, I think we've, you know, and we've, as we've gone along, we've integrated any questions or feedback into the draft as, as we've gone along. So that's been the, the public outreach process to this point.
And would you just real briefly give the, your impression of how our builders responded to this?
I didn't really have any concerns. I had a few questions, but they were more just about the, kind of the, the details as far as what it would look like and stuff. And they were actually relieved when we explained to them, one of them in particular, that it was, it was not on anything they had currently, it was just on new development. So that was one, that was one question that we had that really was a non-factor in, you know, how the SDCs are charged, and they're charged on new development, not existing infrastructure. So really, we have not had any concerns voiced at all to us.
And I can speak, I'm John Gillarducci, the principal on the project. I can speak to how they are charged when a developer comes in to get a building permit. It's part of the checklist. In order to get that building permit, they have to pay their system development charges for all services and, including parks. In the case of a non-residential development, you, you would look at that schedule that had different land use types, and you would, you would need to know, you know, if it's going to be an office building or retail, and using the size of the, the size of the space, the gross square footage, then you're able to calculate the charge that applies for a non-residential development. And for a single-family residential, you just use the, the single-family residential charge. And likewise, for other types of residential development by, by dwelling unit, as you saw in the schedule.
So I would be correct in stating that this is not a tax that our current citizens will pay on their current homes.
That's right. New development only.
Thank you for clarifying that, Councillor Linville. Those are great questions. And I also, I mean, I guess maybe just expand on something I was recalling from one of our previous discussions. And that is how the builders, I appreciated hearing your description, as I recall, that the builders, you know, really value the amenities of the parks that go along with the houses they are building, and making that, that a great contribution to the sale process of those homes. Anything to add to that or that you remember?
You know, I think that's a great point, Mayor, is, you know, our, we have a great park system, and that is, you know, reflected in some of the newer parks that have been built in Villaboa and throughout the system. And I think that is, like you said, it just, the developers like those amenities because the homeowners like those amenities, and that, that's those nice park, a nice park system and trails and amenities sell the homes. And so it just makes, you know, their development that much easier.
Thank you. Councillor, Councillor President Akervahl.
Thank you, and thanks for the, the presentation. I think it's great, I mean, like has been mentioned, we've had a couple of work sessions on this. And SDCs is a topic that the council interacts with, you know, many times. But I think it's great for our community members to also understand SDCs because it's a, it's an important part of a growing city like Wilsonville, how we are creating the future of our city. Just this last week at the open house, I, for, for the Beckman Creek Interceptor and Trail Project, I had some questions from people and heard, overheard some questions for people that, you know, touched on the concept of SDCs too. So I think it's, it's, I appreciate the presentation for that, as well as, you know, just our immediate decision process this evening. But in the broad topic of SDCs, oftentimes, we refer to examples with single-family home. But can you confirm or explain if this SDCs is also applied to multifamily homes within the, the city, so we all have a clear understanding of how that works?
Yes, it is, at a reduced rate per dwelling unit, which is based on the average occupancy of multifamily dwelling units as compared to single-family dwelling units. So yes, it would apply to multifamily residential based on the number of dwelling units.
Thank you. So any new multifamily within the city is also contributing to SDCs with the, the logic that, that people living in, in housing, all types of housing are going to be enjoying our parks and using these amenities.
That's right.
Great. And in fact, as you described in your presentation, employment as well. So I, I think that's just an important piece for, for everybody to remember as, as we're talking about, how exactly do we provide for, for the new growth and additional amenities that, that happen within our city? I appreciate you explaining and detailing all of that as part of your presentation.
Thank you. And do any other, are there any other questions?
Very clear.
Okay, great. So we'll now move to the public testimony. And do we have anyone? We don't have anyone in person or on Zoom? Does the staff have anything further to add to the record at this time?
No.
No.
Okay, given all of our discussions, and I'm not seeing any further questions from the council. So hearing no further questions and seeing that no one is here to testify, we've given opportunity through Zoom, the phone, and person, I hereby declare this hearing closed at 8:43 PM on August 21st. It's now time for the council to consider Resolution Number 3046. Do I have a motion on Resolution 3046?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3046.
Do I have a second? Motion 3046 has been moved and seconded, moved by Council President Ockravall and seconded by Council, Councilor Berry. Is there any discussion? Council President Ockravall.
Thank you. I, you know, it's, it's not enjoyable to increase the cost for anything, right? And as a council, we are given the task to assess the needs of our community and figure out ways to provide for those needs. And I appreciate the careful thought and the work that has gone into this analysis that we are using as the basis for this decision. You know, this analysis has been presented under this topic for a number of work sessions. But I'm also, as I'm considering this item, I'm thinking about items from our equitable housing strategic plan as well. And our responsibility as a city to provide amenities for our community members that allows for true equitable housing, allows for opportunities to recreate in the case of the Parks SDCs, to pursue and maintain a healthy lifestyle. And that is, goes hand in hand with having true equitable housing, having true opportunity for, for, to thrive, to have advancement, to, you know, pursue the things that people want to be able to pursue in their life, to find something that's not always just affordable, but also equitable. Because those two words are not one in the same always. And we recognize that some communities may feel so much pressure to create the affordable housing that the equity can be lost in that too. So while it is not enjoyable to raise the cost for anything, it's part of the decisions that we need to make. And I think this is an important one in order to keep providing the excellent neighborhoods that we want to have in our city.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I was going to, and I, I mean, this is, this is how you get a city that has all these things to offer for its residents in the most equitable way. And I wanted to just add, from our resolution, if you read the resolution, which we have in the packet, I'm not going to read the whole resolution, but I was just wanting to call out one of the, I think it's the fifth whereas, that from, we're really looking ahead. And we're looking at from 2023 to 2036, there will be an additional projected growth in population of 8,276 residents and an additional 6,593 employees, which, as we've heard through this extensive statistical analysis, can be equated to the equivalent of 350 residential equivalents. And so that's what we're looking at. And we're looking at a way of indexing that and carrying the standard of our city forward for many more years with this resolution. So I think it's a, the right way to do it. And I appreciate the thought and analysis that has gone into this.
I'd like to say something.
Oh, please.
I'd like to take it, actually, both your statements, I agree. And I'd like to take it a step further too. We know that most homes that are being constructed anymore within the metro and urban growth boundary have very small yards. And as you said, Mayor, as our city grows, the need for parks that work and requires the investment and the forward thinking of going there, and the SDCs support that. And I appreciated the charting showing that Wilsonville, with what the recommended SDCs, where they land are right in the center. So we're not, you know, we're not going to be up at the top, and we're not going to be at the bottom anymore. We will be right in the center, which, for me, for all intents and purposes, appears to be fair and equitable.
Thank you, Councilor Dunwell. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstaining? The motion passes five to zero. And our hearing is already closed. That, thank you. That brings us to our city managers.
Thank you.
Report. Thank you.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Any legal business?
Yes, Mayor. First, I'm going to have Assistant City Attorney Stephanie Davidson come up to talk about a legislative update that will impact the council, a potential council action here in the near future.
Okay.
You can come right here, that's fine. That's fine.
I'm excited to close this meeting out on such an exciting note. So there are a couple of state laws that are going to take effect soon. One of them will affect public procurement processes and requirements. I'll keep it at a very high level. There are three changes that I'll go over tonight. The first one relating to small procurements for goods and services. These procurements require very little process, and there are very few requirements. Essentially, the city can do them in whatever way it sees appropriate. Under current law, these are contracts with a value of $10,000 or less. And the new state law will have the impact of raising that number to $25,000. So this is good. It means more efficiency, less staff time spent on contracts that are currently intermediate procurements, they'll now be small procurements. There's a similar change to intermediate procurements for goods and services. These comparatively require more process, there are more requirements. But the good news is, under current law, whereas these are contracts with a value of $10,000 to $150,000, those numbers are getting bumped up to $25,000 to $250,000. So again, more efficiency. And the final change relates to public improvement contracts or construction contracts. These contracts require a competitive bidding process in most cases. So it's very process intensive. The change is that there is an exemption for very small contracts, so contracts with a value of up to $10,000. That number again is getting bumped up to $25,000. So again, more efficiency. None of this changes the code section that requires you guys to, or city council, to approve contracts with a value of more than $100,000. But it does mean that our city code is inconsistent with the new state law. So I'll hand the mic back to Amanda. She'll talk to you about the changes that are coming.
So as the council is aware, we've discussed a lot about updating our public contracting code. And yet again, it's abundantly clear that needs to happen sooner rather than later. This goes into effect on September 24th, 2023. We will not have a code amendment done by then. So what staff will be asking council for is authorization for us to adhere, for staff to adhere to the new state thresholds in lieu of our local code until we can do a code update. Like Stephanie said, this is a very big deal, particularly most of our contracts that you all don't see, but the most of our contracts are in that lower range of about $25,000. So this is, this is very big news for our staff. And so being able to go up to that $25,000 threshold is going to allow for a lot more contracts where we don't have to go out for three quotes when we already know probably who we're going to use anyway. So we will be bringing that back probably, well, one of the two next council meetings in legal business, we'll just do an oral motion for that. But again, as council knows, we will be bringing back a more comprehensive public contracting overhaul in the coming months. So the, does council have any questions about the public contracting? Not tonight. This is just a heads up, it's coming your way. So you know why, why we're asking for it, for the motion. So the other update, and actually Representative Neron touched on this, was about the public meetings law update that the legislature went through. The one thing that I wanted to highlight, there's actually two things. One is that there's a mandatory training that will be required during each council member's term. So this goes into effect September, January 1st, 2024. So a heads up that there will be a training that you probably already do by attending LOC, but that's not framed out yet what that will look like. So a heads up that will be coming. The second thing is, is that we, legal staff generally advocate for the no serial email communications, you know, the no reply all. That's what we advise council. And that is based on a court of appeals case that later on, when it went to the Oregon Supreme Court, they kind of punted on the issue. And so there was this question of whether or not that court of appeals case was applicable or not, even though legal staff continued to advocate for, hey, don't reply all. That bill that Representative Neron was talking about now establishes as state law that those serial communications are considered, you know, convening a public meeting, unless you're discussing things like, you know, I'm not going to be attending the meeting or something like that. So that, that question, that gray area, it will, is done. This isn't an issue for the council. You're all very good about not doing that reply all, but just the question's been removed by the state law. So wanted to give you an update on that. And that's it for the legal business.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned, 8:55 PM. Sorry, we didn't have a bio for it.